Good morning, this is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for April 9, 2019. We'll begin with the special order calendar, item number one, 53966BZ, 6119, Freshwater Lane, Queens. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond to city board member questions? Good.
Good morning, Elise Fullader from Eric Palatnick, PC. On behalf of the applicant, DOT, I think was the only comment, and we're getting that together, and we anticipate having that ready soon, and I don't know how long DOT is going to need for a response.
Okay. So, but you haven't submitted your recent, most recent response to them has not been submitted?
Yeah, we got another letter on March 20th.
Yeah.
That was just updating, I believe.
Yeah, pretty much the same as I collateral except for the first.
Yeah, we were just waiting until we responded, and we're like almost, we're like ready to go, we just.
You're almost ready to submit?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. But we don't really know what the...
DOT, their turnaround time is usually about 30 days.
Thirty, so when you're gonna...
Sometimes a little, lately a little delayed.
Yeah, they're running a little late now. What's your turnaround, though? You're gonna be, in other words, you're going to be responding when...
Like, as soon, like, we're ready to go, we just need to do another read-through of all of our comments.
Okay, so let's say you respond by the end of the week.
Yeah.
Something like that, okay. So, um, sorry. So, here we are. So, let's say you respond by the end of the week, then DOT gets, say, till mid-May, something like that, does that sound right? Okay, so then, this is just assuming no response on your part, though, we don't know about that.
Yeah.
Should we give them another?
I mean, yeah.
So, in that case, then we're moving into late June.
Whatever it is, what is. I mean, this is also, it appears that maybe DOT changed people, but we've responded to a few rounds of comments, so hopefully this is...
Okay.
The end?
So, if we said late, late June, so, since you're doing this directly with DOT, it doesn't really matter about a submission to us, right? It's just a direct conversation with DOT, so we could put you on for June 25?
Okay.
Normally, submission would be June 5 for that, but we don't really have a submission.
So, next hearing will be June 20, June 25?
Yeah, June 25.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two, 41068BZ, 8505, Astoria Boulevard, Queens, do you fill in? Okay. Okay. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond to city board member questions? Okay.
The recording didn't work, I forgot those tickets.
No.
Good morning, Elise Fullader, on behalf of Vassalotti Associates Architects, this morning, they apologize, had to be at DCP this morning, but the deli sign has been removed, and they can take another photograph if you'd like to see it, and there was also some other signage comment, but there was difficulties with the video.
So, the comment, oh, because you, we had a problem yesterday with the sound, is that?
Yes.
But you attended the review?
Yeah, but I didn't know to take notes, I didn't know I was doing this, sorry.
Apologies to everyone, we had trouble with the sound on our review session recording.
So, that's why I remember the deli comment.
Okay. So, the issue with the sign, which I'm not sure matters so much, was that apparently there's one sign that you're either counting twice with multiple frontages.
Oh, yeah, I remember.
Counting it three times.
Counting it three times, which is just against you, but it doesn't have anything to do with us, so when you go to DOB...
Yeah.
And you're getting your sign review, you should correct that chart for their benefit, but for our benefit, it doesn't matter, because it's kind of giving us a sort of, I don't know, a placeholder, for lack of a better word.
Yeah, as long as the total amount of signage is...
Right.
It's less than what the permitted is, that's really what, as you pointed out, is a critical point.
Right, but that's what the chart is showing, even though they're triple-dipping, it's still staying under the maximum.
And I can send them this video, so they can be on notice.
Yes, right, just to be on notice, okay, and other than that, we talked about the site being in generally good condition, so we would be willing to condition approval on landscaping installed, okay, according to the plan, and a plan was provided, so...
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I don't think there was anything else. Okay, so are there any speakers on this? So, I'd like to make then a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on condition, the condition being that the landscaping, as shown on the approved plan, shall be installed immediately and shall be maintained and replaced as necessary. Okay, do you have a question, is there something?
No, I was just...
You're looking quizzically at each other for...
No, just because we're closed.
Okay. Okay, so we got that, so there's a condition that the landscaping will be installed immediately according to the plans, and shall be maintained and replaced as necessary.
Okay.
And on that, a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number three, 54084BZ, 341 sound, who you having, you're the Bronx?
I'm sorry. Oh my God, why is it not opening?
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond to city board member questions?
Good morning, Elise Fullader from Eric Palatnick, PC, on behalf of the applicant. Terms of questions I can answer right now. That proximity sensor is a laser sensor which beeps to notify, it like scans the area, and it beeps whenever a car enters or a human enters in order to, as a safety measure.
It's beeping for, but I don't understand what it's...
If a car is coming out into the sidewalk...
Onto the sidewalk?
Then it beeps to let pedestrians know not to be hit.
So, it seems like it's mounted very close to the edge, that's why I'm kind of confused. It seems to be mounted when it's too late to warn anyone.
It's mounted on where they come out of the garage, but I can do a photo that's more, or ask for one that's more far back.
Yeah, sure. Well, that's the other thing, because the photos both are not key to the plans, they're all close-ups, so you can't really figure out what's going on.
Yeah, and I will tell the owner to do more far-out photographs.
Yeah.
Shows, and then...
I'm sorry, I think the photograph is quite clear from what it's shown, the sensor is posted right where the door is.
Yeah.
So, I think to chair's comment is that when the car is almost going to approach it...
Yeah.
I don't know how extended the beam range is.
Okay.
If it is just covering right at the doorway, then the car has already entered the sidewalk.
I can ask about how it extends.
So, I think that's the clarification that would be helpful, so if, let's say, it's picking up before it hits the speed bump...
Okay, yeah.
Then that, I think that would be a reasonable time for the pedestrian, otherwise the car has already entered the zone of warning.
Yeah, I think what it's doing is it's counting on the front of the car, which hasn't yet, where the tires haven't hit yet...
Yeah.
To trigger the sensor, but by then, the front of the car is already on the sidewalk.
Okay.
So, it actually, its location makes no sense.
Unless the range is much wider, then...
But then, if it were such a big range, then workers inside the shop would trigger it all the time, so, right, it needs to be something that's a very fine beam, where it's kind of broken by a car, but it can't be located after the speed bump, that doesn't make any sense.
I will let the...
And so, that's only on the garage door, there's two locations for speed bumps shown on the plans.
Yeah, he has to, due to weather and other concerns, he has to, it's nice now, but it wasn't nice in the past few months, so we have to all work together to make sure everything's installed in a nice way.
Okay, so, I mean, so this was kind of a partial submission in response, right?
It was to show that, to not get adjourned, and to show that we're not ignoring your comments, but we're trying to move forward, not move backwards.
Okay.
That's what the intention was.
Okay, so that everything on the operational plan...
Yeah.
Needs to be shown on the drawings?
Yeah.
And everything on the drawings needs to be installed, in fact, and a photograph that's key to plans provided, and, for instance, the close-up of the fence was kind of strange.
Yeah.
So, if you're showing a fence, you have to show what the extent of the fence is in the photographs, right?
Yeah, but the intention wasn't to finish everything, it's just to show.
Okay. Good. Okay, all right, so how much, so we're talking about also, just looking at the things that needed to be installed, cameras, speed bump, landscaping also needs to be installed, but this is when you start to install landscaping, so how much time?
I think this operator needs a little bit more time, because it's a mom-and-pop shop, it's not one of those big franchises that can get everything together so quickly.
So, what are we talking about, two months to do the work?
I would give them two or three months, maybe three months.
Okay, so that would be all of April, May, or June, so coming back in July, does that sound right?
Yeah.
So, that would be July 16, June 26, right?
So, June 26 submission?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I have to ask if there are any speakers, are there any speakers on this?
Yeah. Do you need it? Okay. New cases, item number four, 75160BZ, 105 New Dorp Lane, also known as 1395 New Dorp Plaza, Staten Island. Raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond to city board member questions?
Good morning, Lara Altman from Law Office, Lara Altman, we did have somebody attend your executive session yesterday and heard your comments. With respect to the community board recommendation, I do have a copy of it right here, retained yesterday.
Yeah.
It was a unanimous vote of 31 to 0, in favor, I should mention. In addition, there was a comment regarding the cracked asphalt, resurfacing, and striping. I already have a set of revised plans from the architect stating that the existing damaged concrete pavement is to be replaced, and the existing parking stalls to be restriped as necessary, because the entire site is concrete, just for the record. With respect to items not in their proper enclosure, I will certainly be having a conversation with my client about that.
Say that again, items not what?
You said there were items that were not in their proper enclosure, things that were creating a bit of a messy circumstance, and I will make sure to speak with my client and make sure that everything is kept in an organized and clean manner on the site. I know that the neighbors have not been complaining, so it must be an unusual circumstance, it might have been a rough day that we saw, but I will talk to them about it and make sure that they are not leaving things out. In addition, with respect to the grassy area behind on Cloister Place, I had already spoken with them a while ago and said, please do not have any cars parked there, they are not permitted. In addition, regarding the 2008 approval, you are correct, there was originally some landscaping back there, it was against Cloister Place and wrapped around. Are you aware of what I'm looking at?
Well, I'm not looking at the drawing, I'm asking...
There was a 2008 approval, and what it showed, I will hold up the plans to show you the area, this is not the 2008 plan, this is the most recent, it had landscaping here and here, we will have that added back onto the site.
Well, so, I'm thinking to request, please, that they don't park there, when they park there isn't going to be enough, if we want to really maintain that site as a green area that's a buffer with the residences, the whole place has to be landscaped.
Understood, well, that's why we were talking about, if we put landscaping back where they had initially requested it, which is along here and along here, with landscaping planter, there's no way to get into the site.
Okay.
They put a planter along the back line of Cloister Place, they can't drive over a planter.
But there's no, so what is that area to the right, where is that asphalt driveway that we see in the photographs?
This is not our property.
Granted, but is that the route that they're using to get onto the site, is what I want to know?
I could find out.
Because there is an asphalt driveway on the, because when you visit, you can't tell where the property lines are.
No, of course.
So, I think what they're doing is, yeah, there's curb cut, they're driving on the neighbor's curb cut, and then they're pulling in.
If that's what's happening, I'll make sure that we create some sort of a buffer where that cannot happen.
Okay.
I understand parking is not permitted there, and I will make sure that they are put in addition.
Okay, my preference, actually, here is to maybe even decoratively fence it and landscape it entirely.
Decorative fence?
Okay, because we, otherwise, there's no way for us to know that this is going to be kept like that. So, when I say decoratively fenced, it means a metal picket fence, right?
Understood.
Right, and inside is fully landscaped, not just with hedges on it. It can be ground cover, it can be other things, but you're treating it as a garden, right?
I will let them know.
And if a gate is provided on Collister, make it just a small gate so the cars cannot get through.
Sorry?
Of course.
Say again?
I said, if a gate need to be provided on Collister, make it like a tiny gate so the cars cannot get through.
Don't make it any, drive-through.
Access, you mean, an access gate?
Yes.
Right.
Of course, understood.
Okay.
Regarding the sign analysis, we have our advice...
Well, before you go there, so what we need to see is the drawings revised with the fencing shown...
Yes.
And full landscaping of that area.
Already noted. With respect to the signage analysis, I already have a revised signage analysis. I will also provide you hours of operation, which I don't have just yet.
Okay, slow down, slow down, slow down.
Yes.
All right, with the signage analysis, this is the one, this is...
There are two signs marked number four.
I'll have that cleaned up. I believe they already cleaned that up last night, but I'm going to double-check that.
But they may be two signs marked number four, but we don't actually know if they're properly calculated, because it seems like that neither of the dimensions match the chart.
They said they redid the signage analysis entirely last night, and they provided me a new one this morning, so I haven't had an opportunity to go through it piece by piece, but High Point Engineering is very reliable, and I know that they said they've already redone it based on the plans. Regarding the number of dispensers, in the 2008 approval, they had gotten board approval to build three dispensers as opposed to the two, they just never made the change. So, they are looking to maintain the two dispensers that they had previously, and they currently have. That's why you saw three dispensers on 2008 and two on the current plans, they just never made the change that they had approved.
And they don't want to?
They don't, according to their architect.
Okay, so, okay, so...
The lumen spread, I also spoke to the architect about that, he has removed the double fixture light at the western property line and changed it to a single, and what that did was it significantly reduced the lumen spread, even though it's adjacent to a commercial building, from eight to two.
Okay. Removed it on the drawings?
Well, of course, this all happened since yesterday's hearing, it hasn't been changed on-site just yet.
Right, okay.
The photos of landscaping in the back, we could certainly provide photos, is this something you'd like, your board would like to see done prior to an approval?
Yes.
We can do that, we can make the changes there, and then we'll provide new photos with that on there.
Okay.
Oh, and the dumpster, the dumpster is actually just slightly off of what the 2008 approval provided, what we can do is we can shift it back to where it should have been on the 2008 approval. That was part of the amendment that was approved in 2008. If you don't have those plans in front of you, I can certainly show those to you.
The dumpster is currently in the tented area, right?
The dumpster, I will show you.
The previous approved was also in the tented area.
Yeah.
Or it was not tented then, but it was in that portion which is currently tented.
2008 approval? Yeah, no, I see it, we have it here, I just don't have it in front of me, okay.
And the proposed plan maintains it in the same area, the only thing is that you're proposing to have a fabric enclosure above it.
Correct.
So, you need to talk about this fabric enclosure, because that's the elephant in the room.
Understood, that fabric enclosure is something that the client would like to maintain, we certainly are going to run the calculations, I heard your comment yesterday regarding 50% of FAR, we don't have those calculations just yet, but we do believe from a quick look at it that it does comply with that requirement.
Does it comply with building code, fire code, all the other kinds of codes?
I'm going to have to speak with the engineer about that, I don't want to speak to that and give you false information.
Anna?
Yeah, go ahead.
Ms. Altman?
Yes, sir.
So, when you do the calculations pursuant to 11-412, it has to be based on the building that was in existence in 1961, so any subsequent amendments have to be deducted?
Absolutely, I'll make a note.
And can you, can you take into consideration the residential property that that fabric enclosure is adjoining against, and what results it's going to have on that? I see that it creates a little box for that property, and I'm not sure if the original planned approval wanted that open area to be there.
Original approval actually had a dumpster in that area, so I would think from the perspective of the property owner, I would rather see the back of a tent than just see a dumpster.
Well, I see that, although this is a bit bigger than a dumpster.
It certainly is larger than a dumpster, I don't disagree with you, but I would think that as a homeowner, it's a lot less invasive, and we did notify...
The neighbor.
Community board, and everybody came out, and there was unanimous support, as a matter of fact, the people on the community board were incredibly nice, incredibly supportive, as they were in 2008, when I also represented these people, so...
Yeah, I'm just concerned, because it is an extension of the function outside of the enclosure, right, in a temporary structure, and I really would like to hear from Fire Department about this, because there, it seems like there are flammables in that structure.
We'll be happy to reach out to Fire Department and Department of Buildings.
Well, Fire Department is also sitting here and will inspect, so actually, if someone's here, if you could, I don't know if you're familiar with the site, but if you...
No.
No, okay, so, we're going to ask Fire Department to inspect the site and inspect the contents of this tented enclosure, just for Fire Department's...
Wonderful.
Benefit, it's 105 New Dorp Lane, also known as 1395 New Dorp Plaza in Staten Island.
Correct.
And for our reference, it's calendar number 751-60BZ.
Andrew?
Okay. As you've heard, we are open to having Fire Department inspect, we have no problem with that, and if they have any recommendations, of course, we will more than have their follow-up.
I'm just, I'm kind of uncomfortable with how, with this idea of tented structures being used instead of the permanent enclosures, and again, I'm not sure how DOB feels about this, it's something also...
We'll look into it.
We could reach out to DOB about it also, and send them photographs from our compliance officer's visits, which we will make available to you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay.
Can we send a notice to the tenant, to the residents behind the gas station?
They've been, this was, they should have been notified, it says...
I didn't see it in the...
No, no, it's true.
They don't get notified in the type application.
Yeah, that's true, because it's an extension of term, right?
We can reach out to them if you would like.
Yeah, I would appreciate it.
You can do that.
It's actually, with this, it's kind of a minor, like an amendment, right? So, it's not just an extent, simple extension of term, there's a different condition on the site that we're having to look at, so I would say notification to neighbors is right, especially the ones that are backing up on this use.
We'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, are there any speakers on this? And in terms of the procedural aspects, I don't know if this should be then modified to be an amendment.
You filed an amendment, correct?
No.
No, but let us first, let, before we go for an amendment, let's first determine whether we meet code with that tent, because if we do not meet code, we'll have to remove it, and if we have to remove it, then no amendment is necessary.
Yeah, I would procedurally just suggest, right, so if you do pursue it...
Then we'll modify the application.
And it's pursued pursuant to 11-412, you'll look at the definition on the 1210 of interior versus exterior work, right?
Of course.
If that is the path, then it's an amendment.
Our pleasure to change that.
If you wish to withdraw this change, then...
Exactly, let's first see if Department of Buildings and Fire Department have any issues, because if they do, there's no reason to, they muddy the waters by changing the application to an amendment that we're not going to need.
Right, I mean, if the property owner wants to pursue an enlargement of the operations and build a structure, which would be legal, certainly, to DOB and Fire Department, that's another question, and that's surely an amendment, right?
Of course, that certainly was something I was thinking of, that we'd be discussing if the Fire Department had a problem with this, but one step at a time, let's find out how they feel about this tent, if they have a problem with it, I will speak to the client about how he feels about expanding his operations potentially, or if he'd like to remove what is in that area.
Okay, all right, just want to see if there's anything else.
Hours?
Yeah, hours of operation, you started to say, do you know what they are?
I don't, we'll provide that for you in the next submission.
Okay. Okay, all right, then, so, the kind of simultaneous steps is, we need a set of plans that show all of the improvements that we've discussed?
And we have to make the improvements.
And you have to make them, but first, we want to see the plan before you actually do the work, right?
Okay.
So, how much...
Would you like to have a hearing in order to just review the plan before the work is done?
That's how we look at plans, right?
Okay, well, I wasn't sure if it was something we could do with the project manager, that's why I wanted to ask.
No.
Okay.
The Commissioner's have to look.
We'll be happy to.
Okay, so, how much time to prepare the plans, and to go, and in the meantime, to also work with Fire Department and DOB on this?
That will only take a handful of weeks, because there really isn't much to do as far as actual change on the site, so if we could ask for three weeks, or four, actually four weeks, because we want to talk to Fire Department as well.
Four weeks to do the work, so...
Well, no, not to do the work, you said you want to look at the plan first.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's what I mean, to do the work on the plans.
Yes, on the plan, yes.
Yeah, 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 okay, all right, so that would be a submission...
And to meet, and to speak with Fire Department, Department of Buildings as well.
Right, let's see, this is kind of a small one, we're doing it in the middle.
So, I assume that, so, what we do in the four weeks for the submission of plans for review, we're not notifying the neighbors yet?
Yes.
Well, yeah, I mean, they're going to make a determination as to whether to pursue pursuant to 11-412 or not.
Pursue the amendment, okay, that's just, I want to make a notation.
Right.
So, are we, we're not notifying the neighbors prior to this being amended?
No matter what we do, we will let the neighbor behind us know, if it's going to be an amendment, then you have to do the process, right? The full notification as required, if not, we'll just notify the neighbors behind that you had requested.
Thank you.
May 1 submission, can you, you think you could submit by May 1?
I don't see why not.
Yes?
I don't see why not, absolutely.
Okay, all right, so, May 1, then you could come in on May 21st.
May 21st?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May 1. Item number five, 27912BZ, 2724 College Point Boulevard, Queens, raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond to city board member questions? No, this one, that's for neighbors.
Good morning, Amanda Iannotti, on behalf of the applicant, we heard the board's comments yesterday, I have some materials to submit to the record showing that the site I have some materials to submit to the record showing that the site was remediated, and we have sign-off spill closure letter and underground storage tank closure report.
Great. Thank you. So, let's see, I'm looking at a letter of July 8, 2013, from DEC, New York State DEC, and it says, they have closed the above referenced spill place, any existing monitoring wells associated with this spill should be properly closed in accordance with the department's documents. Okay. And then in terms of, so that's just closed, that's a spill closure. In terms of the remediation of the site, the removal of contaminated material, what do we know about that?
I, I don't have any other sign-off on that, I just have the underground storage tank removal, which incorporates cleaning up around the soil around the tank, and properly removing the tank. And then there's the closure report and all the correspondence behind that report.
Okay. But, you know, what I don't have is the information from the approval, where there was presumably a remedial action plan that was approved, right? So we don't know whether any of that work was pursued. How do we, you weren't able to find that out?
No, this is, this is what the applicant gave me, I asked for all of their sign-offs from remediation of the site.
But as opposed to, so the question is actually twofold, it's both, maybe this is something that you could find out with a phone call.
Okay.
So it's twofold. One is that you have a spill closure report, that's, that's good. The other is, did they do, did they pursue the remedial action plan? And is it, if it's incomplete, they won't have a sign-off, but has work been done towards the remedial action plan?
I think I might also have to request, if they have it, I think I might also have to re-request the case file then, to review the EA, the environmental documents there.
Yeah, but so if, if your client, it's the same owner as previously, right? So they should be aware of what their obligations are under the remedial action plan. So it's true that if they don't have it, we would need to request the case file, but I just wanted to make.
They pulled out these documents pretty quickly, so that, it seems like they keep good records. So I will give them a call if I could second call and see if there's anything else on soil remediation.
I think that would be the best, yeah. Yeah, that would be the best. So let's put this on for second call. Did you want to add something? No?
No, 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 we were just discussing whether we could reach out to DEP.
Some of the letters say remedial action plan upon, needs to be submitted upon the start of construction. Right, but they did demolition on this site, and the site is now flat. So that implies to me that there was soil disturbance. And there must have been soil disturbance.
To remove the tanks.
Because they removed the tanks, right? So you don't just remove tanks and then throw the dirt away, or throw the dirt back in the hole, because that would be a total waste, right? So it means that the soil had to have been disposed of properly, et cetera, and so.
We'll, we'll reach out and find out if we can get some information, too.
Okay, so from our side, we'll reach out, but on, I'd like to put this on second call to give you some chance to contact your clients. They may have good records that show that they've pursued, and it's not done yet, that's why you don't have a sign-off.
Okay.
Okay.
There was just another question about the sign, the site's not for sale, the available sign is just to attract a potential tenant, it's not a sign for sale.
Oh, it just says available.
Available.
It says avail, oh, the available sign means available, doesn't say available bank.
No, but yes, when, when there is interest, and they call, they do tell them that it's limited to the approved plans and to a bank user.
Okay. So it, but it's, it's for rental? They're going to do like a net-net lease, is that the idea, or something like that, or?
I, yeah, well, the applicant is also a general contractor.
Oh.
Yeah, so they would be constructing the building in accordance with approved plans for a bank tenant.
Tenant, okay. All right. Okay, good. So are there any speakers on this while we have speakers?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, so putting this on for second call. Okay.
Item number 6, 27113BZ, 129 Norfolk Street, Brooklyn.
So this is a postponed hearing, right? We could just put it on for whenever, right? Did we get a call from the applicant? Is the mater, are the materials complete on this? We don't know.
I don't know.
Okay, I'm just going to give more, more time, more time. So here we are. This is, this is an extension of time. So we could put this on for June 4th, I guess? Is that enough time to re-notify?
There's no notification.
There's no notification on this. Right, right, okay, so June 4th, May 15th submission. Right. Oh, postponed hearing, okay.
Item number 7, 27713BZ, 1769 Fort George Hill, Manhattan. The sign here. Raise your right hand. Is it your team also? Yeah, all your team?
No.
You can, no, if you're not, you're not going to speak right now, but raise your right hand. The team, that's for the, okay. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to the board member questions?
Yes.
Okay. So when you come up to speak, you can sign up, so you can start. Jeffrey.
Jeffrey Chester, Schuman Updike Kaufman for, for the applicant. As board knows, this variance was granted back in 2014 for a, an affordable development, which actually also included market rate units, 113 units. It was, it was and remains a very challenging development lot. It's got steep slopes, it's narrow crescent shaped. It is hard by the, the New York City Transit Authority Number 1 line, which drops immediately back at the rear of the property. So it has, it's burdened with a lot of unique aspects that not common in typical lot. But we're here today for an amendment and an extension of term. The amendment was occasioned by several factors, mostly the fact that we're now using a different program to finance this. So I have my whole team here, including the people from South Bronx Overall Economic Development, and their partner Apex Development, that can get into this in a little more detail. But what happened is, there was a change of management at SoBro. The president of SoBro was gone, their real estate team at SoBro was gone, new people were brought in. They reviewed what they had in the pipe, you know, the pipeline, what they wanted to do, what they didn't want to do, and they ended up going in a different direction. And at the same time, the sort of ongoing discussions with HPD, you know, we went towards the, the Ella program, which is extremely low, low income program, which is actually more aligned with, with SoBro's mission, and for a variety of reasons. Previously, the, the previous development was going to be a part of what is now, I believe, called a mix and match, I'm not sure it was called a mix and match then, but if it was, it was different, it was a different iteration of the program back then. And that allows units anywhere between, I believe, 40% to 130% of AMI. So there, there would have been a significant component of, of market rate units in that proposal. That is less in keeping with SoBro's mission. The other issue with using that today is that it requires an actual equity cash infusion. And SoBro is a not-for-profit, doesn't have that. They did at the time have an investor that was willing to put that money up, then investor pulled out of the deal. They have now brought on Apex Building Development, which doesn't put cash infusion into projects, but they themselves are builders, so they have a greater expertise in actually doing the GC and building out these kind of jobs. So it was a variety of reasons that they went towards the Ella program. I would also, you know, like to point out that, and I took a look at this, when city, both city planning and EDC studied the inward neighborhood prior to the inward rezoning. Several of the goals that were identified had to do with, you know, providing permanent affordability in the neighborhood, providing greater affordability and deeper affordability in the neighborhood, all of which this project is now doing. The increase in the number of units also has to do with the fact of HPD changing their design guidelines. The unit sizes are now smaller, and therefore, in this, within the same bulk envelope, we can house more units. We can get into all this in a little more detail. I know you had, I know the chair had some questions specifically about the plans and the survey, so I'd like the architect to come up.
No, 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 but before you do, is, do you have anybody here from SoBro?
Yes.
Yes, that would be helpful.
Steven?
Yeah.
Sign in.
So I'm, the, the issue really is that the community board voted against this, right? And, and, and their reasoning was that the, the unit sizes are not reflective of the neighborhood, right? And they voted against it the first time, and then the second time, the unit sizes have decreased significantly more, so there's effectively almost no family-sized units. So my, my concern, which I mentioned yesterday, is about the, kind of the fair share principle. Is this neighborhood being oversaturated by special needs when the community is talking about needing affordable housing for families?
That, that, I, I appreciate that, that's a macro problem that I, I don't have the answer to, since, standing up here today. I will say the community board has its own sort of ideas of what they like. And what they like may not be necessarily aligned with either current city policy, as expressed by the Department of City Planning, or by HPD. The, the community board is not happy with the idea of getting rid of parking in transit districts. That's another thing they're not happy with. I will tell you, and Stephen Brown will reiterate, that we do have support of the local councilman, we do have the support of the Bronx, of the, excuse me, Manhattan Borough President, and we have the support of the local congressman. I believe the councilman is putting up capital funds for this project.
You have to state your name.
If you could just state your name for the record.
Stephen Brown, I'm the president of SoBro.
Thank you.
Okay. So, yeah, I do appreciate the fact that the, the community board was looking for more family units. I mean, we're, in a way, we're kind of caught by a number of different cross-currents. City policy, in terms of, and they're the, they're the financiers, they're the providers of, of the, the bonds and the subsidies that are necessary to do affordable housing, as you all know, has, has driven smaller units, and also is requiring, in all of the new developments, a set aside for people who are formerly homeless or special needs. So this, this has evolved since the last time we appeared before this board, and we have, we have had to change the plan to be competitive within the process, and then provide more units that are for people of lower income or formerly homeless or for special needs. So I, I don't know that I would characterize it as, as, as overburdening a community, it's more the fact that the city has recognized that we have a very significant homeless problem, and that any building that's built now with city subsidy has to have homeless. So we've actually gone up to about, reduced the AMI, the, dusted median, median income well down, which, which actually was applauded by the Borough President. They actually were, were happy that we had brought the affordability down, so that it actually is more reflective of the neighborhood. But the trade-off is that, in order to be, be competitive, in order to be feasible, we had to reduce, we had to ask you to help us increase the number of units and reduce the size of units. We're staying in the same envelope, but the only way to do this, and to make it a feasible project, is to, is to, is to reduce the number of units, and, and, you know, the specialties.
Size of units.
The size of, the size, that, decrease the size and increase the number, I'm sorry.
It's, sorry, but I just want.
Decrease the size, increase the number. I think I said that right.
Yeah, decrease the size, increase the number, decrease the number of three bedrooms, that's, that's what's happening.
And, and part of that is because, you know, we will have more studios, because we will have more singles, specialty, what do you mean, specialty housing? And we're also providing services, and part of the package is that we were providing services to the people who are a special needs population. So it's not, I certainly, I mean, I've been involved in housing for a very long time, certainly building bigger units is something that we all would like to do. I just, you know, within this plan, within this financing structure, it's just not something we're able to do and make it a feasible project. And that's really, that really is the bottom line. I will also say that we're four years, we're back here four years later, again, we don't like to come back for an amendment to extend the time. I'm fairly new, I've only been there for about a year, so there has been a significant change in leadership in the organization. Our partner, who was our equity partner, again, somebody that, before my time, did drop out, there, there had to be a number of changes in the plan, we had to go out and find a new partner who is a, is a contractor, you know, different characteristics, they, they're a builder, this is a very difficult site, we thought it was important to bring in somebody who had that kind of expertise, as opposed to just an equity partner. All in all, that has delayed the project, believe me. Carrying, carrying the site, paying all the expenses is not something we want to do. The longer it takes, the harder it is to make it work. So this is not something we desire, it's unfortunately where we find ourselves. So essentially, we're asking for your, your indulgence, almost, to the fact that we have taken longer than we, certainly we would have liked, and certainly that was anticipated when we, but the, when the prior management put this plan before you, which at the time was probably financeable, had they built it in 2016, I think we'd all be happier.
Yeah, just a curiosity, is your partner then sort of doing this as a turnkey?
No, no, their partner, their partner, their partner. They're both a builder and a partner.
Okay, okay.
And Rob is here?
Right. I'm just looking at our questions from yesterday. I think Commissioner Otley-Brown, you had questions?
Right, I had questions that dealt with the E-finding, which is the minimal variance. So prior to you coming in for the amendment, there was a statement that, for the previous project, in order to be competitive, you had to limit the amount of premium costs per unit to bring down the total development cost per unit, and you had reached a number of almost $18,000 in premium costs per unit, made you competitive in terms of vying for funding. Now you need an amendment, and that calls for an additional 20 units, which brings the premium cost down to about $15,000 per unit. However, I know you have a new funding source, and you're trying to be competitive in a new program. So you guys have given us the loan sheets for that, but I need the narrative background that talks about why the $15,000 per unit in premium costs is what's needed to maintain, to be competitive for the new funding stream.
Yeah, and I think it's even broader than that now. I mean, your four or five years have passed, and again, I'll defer to Rob on this, but it's more expensive, and the subsidies haven't kept up. So I think we can certainly look at that and then get you back something in writing, but it, it's not only the premium cost now, but it's also just.
It's the total development cost.
Overall, the total development cost has gone up faster than the level of subsidy has gone.
Right, so that's really.
Which also drives why we have to use a different program.
Right, that's missing from the narrative.
So you'd like to see that?
Yeah, and then that'll satisfy the E-finding.
Okay.
There's another significant thing that I, that I left out previously. Under the, the mix and match program, the extent that we have, would have units that were not below 80% AMI, that would trigger parking.
Right.
So we would no longer be able to do non-parking. When we first came, they, we had some rough numbers of what we thought parking would cost. When we really started to get into it, we realized it would be far more expensive. Both SoBro and their partner Apex believe the requirement of parking would just kill this project, would make it prohibitive.
Because you'd have to build that other sub-seller, that subs.
This is a tough site. This is a very tough site.
And bless your rock.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we do have to build a church. So it, there's just a lot of things going on on this site that are, that make it a challenge. And so again, we're sort of asking for your indulgence.
Right, okay.
To help us figure out how to make this work.
Okay, we had a couple of other questions that really are the architect's questions. Yeah, so want to, is there the architect here? Yeah.
Can I show you a water?
You just sign in, and you can help them.
Ms. Walker, just, when you get to the podium, just please station in.
Can you bring the?
Chester, can you slide the boards over, because we can't see them on the side.
Antonia Walker with Body Loss and Associates?
So I, I believe a couple of the questions, one had to do with the fact that there was a second survey, and I think there was also a question about the, the back, the definition of the, the rear lot line, and exactly where that was. So I'm going to let, I'm going to let Antonia address both of those issues.
Our original survey was done prior to our first submission for, for variance. In 2015, we requested another, or an amended survey, so we could really understand the relationship of our site to the tracks of the MTA right behind our lot. What happened with the revised site was that they noted that there was a sliver along the MTA property that had previously been part of the lot where the MTA was, which was then added to Lot 190.
Your lot?
Our lot.
So had that happened.
We believe the first survey was inaccurate.
So this, before, the, the previous lot outline had a little zigzag jog at the, at the, the north end of the lot. Now, the, the lot basically goes straight. Now, the lot basically goes straight through and includes that straight sliver from north to south.
But your building is jogging, that's the reason that I was.
No, because of the original, because of the original jog, that's why the building was jogging. So, now that it is not jogging, we've maintained.
You, there's a jog there, is that not the building?
This is, this is the jog of the building.
Yes, so why?
That was in the original plan because there was a jog in the lot outline.
Okay, so my question is, with that jog, are you maintaining, because it's not dimensioned on the drawings that we have, are you maintaining 10 feet from your rear lot line all the way across?
Yes.
Because there's a jog?
Yes, that jog was maintained at the, at the 10 feet from the lot line. That was the required, or the required rear setback.
But so, according to that, the jog, yeah, so I don't see a dimension on the, on the rest of the site showing the 10 feet. I only see the 10 feet dimension on the jog, on the part that protrudes the most on the right side. You see, it says 10 feet there?
Yes.
There's no, now you're jogging in?
Now, we're jogging in.
Right.
And the required setback is shaded in the pink, which goes straight, so, out to the rear lot.
So, the problem is, and you don't add another dimension, the problem is, the drawings that we have have, like, the historical lot line and the rear lot line, and maybe it's the new rear lot line on the same drawing. So, you can't figure out where the rear lot line of the, of the site is. So, it looks like, so you don't, that's why I asked the question.
There is a new dimension that indicate, I will, I can provide another dimension that indicates the revised rear lot on the southern part.
Right, so, see, there's, there's a line that points to the tax lot line, and then there's another which is forward of the 10 feet. You see, we have a dimension there that's forward of the 10 feet. I don't know if your plan is the same as what we have, but there's a, there's an arrow that points to a dash-dot line that's described as the tax lot line. And then, to the right of it is a dimension of 10 feet, which looks like it's two feet short. Yeah, right, no, but, so the point is, you need to make much clearer on the drawing where the confine of the zoning lot line is, because for our set of drawings, it's extremely unclear, and you need to dimension more often along your rear lot line that you're holding the 10 feet, okay?
Certainly, we can include that.
Okay. Then, then this is actually a question from Mr. Chester, it was quite confusing. In the statement of facts, you say the original side yard was eight feet, and now the proposed is 25 foot eight, and then you, but that's not the case at all. The original side yards were 22 and a half feet and 32, and the proposed is 25 foot seven and 31 foot six, which is hardly anything.
The numbers, the numbers changed, I think those numbers.
Take, you have to speak with a mic in your hand.
Yeah, the numbers changed because we hit, we hit a utility pole, was it? Yeah, but I think those numbers, the sewage, sewage line, so the whole, the whole development had to be slightly changed within the lot line?
No, you didn't hear what I said. In your statement of facts, it says, "The side yard that was approved was eight feet." And now the proposed, wait, and now the proposed is 25 foot eight. When I compare the originally approved drawings to the proposed drawings, there's a difference of three, 25, two feet or three feet, and another of six inches.
Right.
So, that's not the same thing as what you said in your statement of facts.
That's, that's a mistake, clearly.
Okay, because the statement of facts also says, "The envelope significantly decreased," which isn't, right?
It's not, it's not.
It decreased a little bit.
Yeah.
Right, so your statement of facts doesn't reflect your project.
That'll be revised.
Okay, and then, there's, okay, so we got that, and I think, oh, exterior finished materials. This you wouldn't know because you don't appear here often. I personally have this problem with exterior insulation finished material. It is not a durable material. We have all kinds of issues about moisture behind it, and it can't be used on any project that is approved by BSA. So, you need to find another, you know, could be some kind of cement-based material. Understood that you might want to not use brick throughout or metal, you might want to use metal panels or something like that, but it has to be a different material than foam.
Okay, thank you, noted.
Okay, thank you.
Regarding the rear yard thing, I'm looking at BSA 3, and I can see two dimensions, one to the right and one to the left. They both say 10 feet, but since the property line, we're not sure about the property line is parallel to the building.
Right.
Do you want to provide, do you want to then provide, like, an intermediate dimension and put a note to it, maintain minimum 10 feet rear yard across?
Well, if it was dimensioned clearly, that the problem is, there's too many lines there that could be viewed as a property line. So, yeah, I mean, there could be a note that 10 feet is the minimum, but it should be in a few places because you've got the building moving and you've got three lines that could easily be a property line, and maybe even five lines that could be a property line. I think a lot of it is the line weight, it's not clear where the property line is. That's really what we're talking about.
I think, given the complexity of the site, I agree with Commissioner Shetland's comment that having that additional note.
Okay.
Would also kind of help us, help the applicant in your review, when you're submitting the drawings to DOP and for all of us, and add the additional 10-foot note where possible.
What do you mean, where possible?
As directed by the chair.
Okay.
I meant.
It's always possible, you just.
No, 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 I meant as directed by the chair, that's what I was.
Okay.
That's what I meant.
All right. All right, I think, are there any speakers on this? No speakers? All right. So, finally, then, we need some revisions to the drawings. We need the response, the written response to Commissioner Otley-Brown's questions about finances, and correct the statement of facts. And, I think that might have been a, and then also, could you please give us, in terms of the drawings, one set of drawings where the change, the specific change, is bubbled, and one set that's clean, both signed and sealed, and change the date on the drawings, so it's the date of your revision? Okay? And then, as to the statement of facts, also, let us know what the change is on the statement of facts on which page, so we don't have to search for it, okay? And I think that's it.
I just have a question. It has nothing to do with the application, but this is just for my curiosity. Who's the structural engineer for the project?
Construction engineer?
Yeah.
Chris B. Engineer.
Have they provided vibration isolation for the building?
This is curiosity.
Yes. Have they provided vibration isolation for that building?
No.
Thank you.
Oh, you need to come up, sir, I'm sorry.
This is Victor Bodie Lawson, he's the head of the architectural firm.
Hi, good to see you.
State your name, sorry. Victor Bodie Lawson, Bodie Lawson Associates Architects. So, the structural engineer is Gideon Engineering, Gideon Associates. Because the building is designed next to a subway station, we have to submit drawings to the MTA. So, those drawings have been already done, they've been submitted to the MTA. I'm sorry?
They were approved?
They have not been approved. They're going through the approval process right now.
But in these drawings, you haven't provided, like.
We are going, he is designing for vibration dampers. So, vibration dampers will be incorporated into the structural system.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's just a curiosity related to other things we look at.
Yep.
Okay, all right, great. So, how much time do you need? Sorry, speakers, I already asked.
I just do want to add something.
Yeah.
Can I, I'd like a statement that, to the effect that all other alternatives have been exhausted.
Alternatives of what?
So that, alternatives to the single, to the studio design, I mentioned that this type of funding is based on having these smaller studio apartments, and I'm not sure if there's any other programs that would have alleviated the concerns from the original.
No, no, no.
There aren't any other programs?
So, I think, you know, to this point, because I don't want to answer for the applicant, but to the point is, to clarify, which is kind of what Mr. Brown just did, that the mix-and-match program doesn't work anymore because it relies on investor funding, and they don't have an investor anymore, right? And that they, and that the city is orienting more and more to requiring that there be supportive housing in the projects that they fund, right? So, maybe what we could get from Mr. Brown, when he writes up his analysis for Commissioner Otley-Brown about the finances, it's just an explanation, which is somewhat in the materials already, but to reiterate, an explanation of why the shift from a mix-and-match and the cities, and how HPD and, and HD, this is both HPD and HDC's funding, right? How they are refocusing development to include supportive housing, which by almost definition is zero bedroom units. We even talk about that with senior housing. We're looking now at another project that has very, very low income, also supportive units that are very small, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think that's it. We just need it all tied together into a, as opposed to the whole universe of possibilities. This is New York City's universe, so if you lived in Kansas, it'd be a different universe.
Well, right, there are, you know, there are a limited number of programs that HPD has.
Right.
The yellow program's actually one of the most popular. In our conversations with HPD, they said, what's the affordable, the overwhelming majority of affordable housing right now is either doing, they're either doing 80/20 or they're doing the yellow program.
Right. And 80/20 then is, is market rate, and then you need an investor, and then you need also lots of parking.
Well, 80/20 is not, not what SoBro does.
Right, okay. Right, okay. Yeah, because this is a not-for-profit housing developer as opposed to a for-profit, right? I'm just making note of that. Okay, so, how much time to? Any speakers? Make these, I, or he asked for.
Wow.
Three times. Okay.
We can do it pretty quickly, two weeks?
Really?
No.
Okay. How much, let's see, two weeks is probably not doable, given our calendar, but.
Three weeks?
All right, let's see what we can do.
And one of the questions I always ask, when is this, is this scheduled for closing?
No, we can't, it won't, we got into this with HPD. HPD won't, won't do it until they know we've been approved by this board.
Okay, but are you trying to target for June closing? That's really what I'm asking.
I would have to defer to.
June 2020. June 2020. Okay.
Okay, because you have to get all the approvals from MTA and other things.
We'd never, we'd never get there.
Right, and you need, right now, this sign off next week, get through the MTA.
I was just looking to see a way to put it on.
Right.
May 15th is the, June 4th is the. Just a question for Commissioner Otley-Brown, do you think that's a lot of review of the materials for you?
I don't think it's a lot of review of the materials. It's probably going to be a fairly concise memo. I just wanted to know, are there other financials on for whatever day you choose? Because I didn't get a calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, I don't, I'm not looking.
I have, that's why I had the extra, I forgot to give it to her. So, that's the first, that's the reason I'm asking about that.
No, this, this will be fine.
It'll be fine.
Thank you.
All right, so then, yes, so, a submission on May 15th or June 4th, continued hearing? May 15th, June 4th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appeals Calendar, item number 8, 2017-318A, 155 Johnson Street, Staten Island.
Wanted to adjourn it on this. Police Volodaires? Oh, sorry. You want six weeks to submit, or six weeks? I believe it's six weeks to submit. Appeals, no. Okay, so then that's, so that would be like a June 4th. June 25th or the June 5th submission, is that good? Yep. Good. Thank you very much. Yeah, just give me one second. What did we say about that last? June 5th? No, 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 the one before. June 4th? No, yeah.
The one before was 515?
277.
515, 64.
Okay. Got it, okay. All right, ready? Okay, zoning calendar items, continued hearing, item number 9, 5602BZ, 317 Dayhill Road, and item number 10, 196BZ, 600 McDonald Avenue. You raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth in your testimony for the board and respond honestly to the board members' questions?
Stuart Klein, fine slow it. On behalf of the respondent, good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I have a timetable for you.
Good.
This matter was heard at a public hearing at CPC. The zoning subcommittee vote is on for 416. The land use committee vote is on for 417, and the council deadline to approve this.
Wait, zoning subcommittee already met on 4/2?
That's correct, and they adjourned at 416.
Ah, okay.
And the land use committee is now on for 417, and the council deadline is 4/29.
So, by the end of the month?
That's correct. There was no one who spoke in opposition at the zoning subcommittee, two council members, including a local council member, Mr. Lander spoke on behalf of the application.
What did Mr. Lander say?
He said he liked it.
He said more than he liked it. What did he say?
No, he had no opposition to it. He basically thought it was a, we had covered all the bases, and he said he had not received any comments from anybody in the neighborhood.
He said just a little bit more than that. What did he say?
I don't know, I listened to him. I listened to him, and I didn't hear anything other than that.
This is sworn testimony, really? You didn't hear anything else?
No, I did not.
You just swore in your testimony. He said that he wanted to see parking that was adequate, right?
Yes, absolutely.
And he asked, and he asked about the lease for the parking.
Mm-hmm.
And he said that he hoped that the lease would be a permanent lease.
Extended, yes.
Instead of year-to-year, as it was represented by Mr. Rothgrove.
That's correct.
Okay.
But, but parking was always part of the submission.
Right, but when I asked you the question, what else did he say? And you said, "I didn't hear him say anything else." Was that a true statement?
Well, I, well, I, to be honest with you, I responded because it was in the application. He said he was in favor of the application.
So, it wasn't a true statement?
I didn't think needed articulation.
Just to clarify this for the councils that are sitting here next to me.
And, and, well, Mr. Rothgrove also opined that, under the zoning, he didn't need, we didn't need parking, but notwithstanding that, we were going to be providing it on a standard basis.
Mm-hmm.
I heard that part.
Yeah, you're under oath, you know. All right. Okay, so, we're going to, since it's going to be voted the end of the month.
That's correct.
Then, we're going to discuss internally how the next step has to work in terms of modification of the drawings, because at the moment, I don't know what that process is, right? Okay. Okay, so, all I can do is put this on for continued at the end of June, say? No, end of May, end of May?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair?
Sorry?
The city council votes, there's a 30-day period.
Oh, right, that's true. So, the rezoning doesn't take, come into effect until the 30 days are up? Is that how it works? I forget how you look, the process works. So, it has to be the end of June? Let's do it end of June, it's been, sorry. June 25th? Yeah. Well, there's no. Well, there's no. Yeah, June 5th submissions of the maintaining the fire department inspections and so on, and photos of whatever, staff photos of that's part of the deal with fire department.
I believe the only outstanding fire violation is the occupancy. They dismissed five of the six.
Okay. Okay, so we did it? June 25th, June 5th submission, okay?
And I'll speak to staff with regard to what is required for the submission?
Yes. Well, for the going forward, it's not the submission, it's how we handle procedurally the modification of the drawings.
Okay, but you want something submitted on the 5th?
No, that would be, what would be submitted on the 5th is continuous submissions of your requirements to have the fire inspector and so on on site, and the architect to be checking prior to public assembly.
Mr. Benoit.
Because as was misstated, and I'm going to say this, at the city council hearing, there is no valid public assembly permit for this use for the building, and Mr. Rothberg misstated fact at city council hearing.
To correct the record, there was a PA assembly permit for 600. I reclockman.
High school students at lunch not to be used as a youth group.
I'm not arguing with you, I'm just simply saying.
Banquet facility.
Well, actually, it was originally issued for 600, and it covered the banquet, but Mr. Gluckman refused to continue it after.
Correct, that's called not having a valid.
I appreciate that, yeah.
Public assembly permit, and it was misstated, misrepresented at the city council here. I just want to make that extremely clear.
I'll bring that up first.
Like, honesty has not been a big theme with this site, okay?
I'll bring that up to Mr. Rothberg.
Yeah. Okay. Speakers, would you like to speak?
I don't have anything to say, I'm just monitoring.
Okay. As counsel representing the neighbor adjacent, okay. All right, that's this one. Okay. Item number 11, 26814BZ, 23106-10 Northern Boulevard, Queens. They're looking for August date, I think?
August 13th or later.
August 13th or later, oh.
Sorry, submission?
For the hearing, so.
August, August, I'm not going to be here, and it has engineering.
Okay, so we, oh, we actually have a pretty short staff on August 13th. It needs to be September. So September 10 with a, with an August 21 submission. Item number 12, 7715BZ, 2443685th Avenue, Queens. This is adjourned, right?
Yeah, police Voladares, just getting the adjournment date.
Right. So again, I'm going to reiterate, this is the fourth and last adjournment. We are going to be sending, our council will be sending a dismissal warning letter to the owner and its owner's rep by certified mail, and there are no further adjournments, no talking us out a bit, that's that, okay? The last time we heard this was exactly a year ago, happy anniversary. Um, okay, so I don't know what's holding this up. It's for a two-family dwelling. I, I don't actually understand what's holding us up. So to move this along, because we've had it here far too long, and want to put it on soon. Okay. So how about June? How about June 4th with the May 15th submission? Okay, thank you. Item number 13, 20164171BZ, 823 Kent Avenue, Brooklyn. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to the board member questions?
Good morning, Phoebe Ton from Sheldon Mobell PC for the applicant. We attended yesterday's review session and made a resubmission of the plans. Did everyone receive them? I have hard copies as well, and it also submitted a note from the architect regarding the changes made to the plans, including a corrected axonometric view of the sloped bulkhead. On the plan previously, there was a note regarding the sidewalk fence, but now it has the, has a little line on it to illustrate where the fence will be removed. The, there, just to keep it safe, there's a note on the DEP note that says, number three, which is on the site plan, that says that the proposed vapor barrier system to be installed referred to the BSA 14, and there's a note as well on the cellar plan, keying it to that, that page, BSA 14. And then, since it was a submission after March 1st, the appropriate BSA notes were added.
Right, okay, great. Right, okay. Are there any speakers on this? So we also have air quality and noise sign-off with conditions that are already shown on the plans, and I think that was it. So I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashibeta?
Aye.
And I, on this one, I would like to say that I really appreciate fire department working with the property owner to make this a viable project, because it is an extremely unusual site condition, and the idea of being able to build a house at this location makes sense, actually, as long as fire department is satisfied with the fire safety. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to grant on condition. We already have a restrictive declaration that's in approved draft form, so it must be executed and recorded prior to permit, and all of the restrictive declaration conditions should appear in our resolution. And then to reiterate, the fence that's outside of the property line shall be removed prior to permit. Anyway, I don't see how you would work if the fence is in your way. And then the fire department had a series of conditions that need to be included in the resolution, which I won't read, because there's a lot of them, but it's in the fire department letter. And same for the department, the DEP conditions, which are window wall attenuation of 28 dBA, and alternate means of ventilation needs to be incorporated into the building design.
And the vapor barrier.
Oh, and the vapor barrier has to be installed. Yeah, it says, proposed vapor barrier system should be used, yeah. And what else? And applicant, proper handling, transportation, and disposal of excavated materials in accordance with applicable DEC regulations. Okay? So on that, a motion to grant. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashibeta?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Item number 14, 201756BZ, 1321 Richmond Road, Staten Island. This is also being adjourned. Oh, is there anyone here to talk about this one? No? Okay. So again, this is the fourth adjournment. So we started this hearing over a year ago. We had a not very productive hearing in January, so no more, no more adjournments at all. We will not negotiate, renegotiate that. Counsel to send a warning letter to owner and owner's rep. And again, let's see. We could put this on for?
Not to August?
No.
Why August?
They didn't ask for any particular amount of time.
No, and obviously, Commissioner Ashetta will not be here.
Yeah, and we need, right, so I would say end of June, where we have room. So June 25th with a June 5th submission. Okay.
Do you want to do the second call, or you want to wait?
If she's ready for a second.
Oh, you are?
I forwarded you her, an email.
Oh, I did, okay.
You still remain sworn in?
Yeah, you're not sworn in.
So are we at the end of something, where we're doing a second call? Wait, just a second. How did you decide second call now?
No, just, do you want to do it now, or do you want to wait until we get to maybe the end of?
Yeah, so.
Does it throw you off?
Yeah, because otherwise, we don't know where the sec, where to put it. When you're looking, reviewing the video, you can't find it.
All right.
So second call at the end of the first session?
Okay, better, okay. Okay, all right, sorry.
Item number 15, 2017131BZ, 7785 Jerry Street. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to the board member questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning, David Rosenberg of Sheldon Mobell PC. On behalf of the applicant, we attended yesterday's review session, and in response, last night, we submitted revised proposed plans that changed the facade materials to brick.
Yay.
And with that, we believe that all the outstanding items on this application are worked out.
Right, okay, just one second, I need to. All right, are there any speakers on this? I really appreciate the, it being changed to brick, and.
Just, just one second. The, the other one, the other finished material was called?
Biden brick.
Right.
It was called Biden thin brick.
Yes, so it's a brick at the end of the day. So you, you confirm that this brick has dimensions different from the previous one?
So when? The other materials were not actually brick, they, it was more of a panel kind of facade.
It wasn't?
finished material?
Yeah, it wasn't a panel.
And, casing the chair's comments, the applicant understands that, yes, they would, they want to use actual brick, which is why the plan is now note, actual traditional.
Right, and we'll make this a condition that it's actual masonry, brick masonry. Okay. So, and, and it's not, by the way, the Biden brick is not a paneling system, which would be different. If it was mounted into a panel, then they're hung and they move separately and not concerned with breakage then. So, okay. And it's quite an expensive system, those hung brick programs, systems. Okay, so then, I would like to make a motion to close. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashibeta?
Aye.
Sorry, I'm having computer problems. G E R R or G A R?
G E R R Y.
Sorry, just a second, because it's a motion to grant on condition, the first condition, of course, being that, that neither exterior insulation finished system material nor face brick shall be used, that only actual brick masonry shall be used on the project. And then the other is with some, with respect to something we discussed quite a long time ago, Department of Buildings shall review compliance of the building at the fourth floor and above with zoning resolution, and in particular with street wall setback and dormer regulations, section 23-621 and 23-622. Okay, and on that, a motion to grant. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Yeah.
Commissioner Ashibeta?
I'm sorry, all right.
Thank you.
Item number 16, 2017240BZ, 2208 Bowler Avenue, the Bronx. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and you respond honestly to the board member questions?
Yes.
Good morning, Eugene Pillman for the applicant. We attended to a review session yesterday, and as you stated, DEP sign-offs are still, have not been received. We filed a revised EAS last week, and we hope to receive sign-off shortly. There were a few questions about the survey, in particular, what changes were made, and it was just a note to note that it's NAVD 88.
There was a note that, say again?
It was just a note to clearly indicate that it's NAVD 88.
Oh, okay. All right.
There was another question about the flood map as to why the 2007 was used rather than the 2015. So these flood maps, actually, a portion of the site was removed from the flood zone in the 2015 map, so it is the more conservative analysis, the 2007 map, but the building's going to be fully flood compliant. Since DEP is the only issue left, we asked that the hearing be closed. I think we addressed all the board.
We can't close while we have open environment.
Understood.
The other thing is, your drawings, in an overzealousness, the architect submitted a big stack of drawings. If you could select which ones tell the actual clear story and resubmit that set with, with the most recent date?
We'll.
Just because we, just because it's a stack of like 15 redundant drawings.
We'll trim it down.
Okay.
It's set to be approved.
Right, so floor plan size, elevation sections, site plan, I'm taking to that.
Correct, correct. All right. But I, I mean, the drawings are very helpful, they're really well done, and you can really understand the project. I think it'll be a really nice project, actually. Okay, so what are we talking about in terms of environmental review? Do we know?
It's 35 days, 30 days.
But you submitted the EAS on 4/5, right?
Yes.
So, right, is that, you submitted on April 5th the EAS?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And so I don't know what we're talking about in terms of sign-off. Are we just talking about 30 days?
Typically takes about 30 days.
All right. So then, that means, and that's the only outstanding issue, other than you submitting clean, a tighter set, that's all?
Five weeks.
Okay, so. Madam Chair?
DEP is taking like five weeks lately.
They're taking five weeks?
Yeah.
Turn around. Yeah, so like end of May, maybe? No, no.
We, I mean, we could put it on, and in the event that we're out on the date, we could just adjourn it to a next hearing day. There's nothing really to discuss.
Yeah, but it takes up a spot nonetheless, so.
Due to financing, though, we, we urge the board to put it on as quickly as possible.
Well, we could put it on for May 21. That gives you more than 30 days, right? Or that gives you 30, it's more than 37 days.
Anything earlier would be greatly appreciated as well.
Earlier doesn't make sense, you won't have a review.
Understood. May 21st is.
May 21st. So May 21 is a, May 1 submission of the revised drawings, okay?
Thank you.
Oh, wait. Is that all right? Yeah, that's all right. Um, I take it back a little bit. I don't like May 21, it's a really killer day. Looking for a little bit. So I'd say June 4th. Let's say June 4th, which is a May 15 submission. Are there any speakers on this? I didn't ask.
Yeah, we have a speaker.
Oh, there's a speaker?
No, there's.
Somebody from the community would like to speak on this project? No?
I'll speak.
Please come. This is Bowler Avenue, right? 2208 Bowler Avenue, right? Hi, you can go up to the, state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Candace Fine-Touch. I'm a consultant for the church. Due to the fact that the financing was secured, is there any way that we can get a sooner date for the EAS? Because I know that at one point, the, the email was in the system, but it really didn't go through. I don't know, I think we'd have to go back to Eugene and ask him. I know that it was all, it was revised, and then we were waiting for it to be approved. So there was like a 16 or 17-day lapse due to this in the system? Do you know?
So I'm going to cut to the chase here. An environmental assessment statement was only submitted, a revised one was submitted a few days ago, so. a few days ago, so...
What she's referring to is, we received the comment letter sub, about three weeks after it was issued by DEP. So, there was a significant backlog in receiving the comment letter.
So, so, okay. But the EAS needs to be reviewed by the agency that reviews these subjects, and so, we're not the agency that reviews what DEP reviews. We review other things. And so, there, we work on their time schedule. There isn't anything we can do, except if you want a restrictive declaration that commits to doing whatever it is we might have you commit to. I'm not even sure what that is.
How does that work? Eugene?
You, or even more than a restrictive declaration, an E designation. That's how we cut short reviews of DEP reviews, right? We go to E designations?
No, we would just, since we've, we've already prepared the EAS, we just want to be all cleared and, uh...
I just, how extensive is the comment that DEP has...
We, we can't sign off for...
No, no, I just want to know what the extent of the comment that DEP has.
Do you have it on?
It was to take fresh noise readings, so we had somebody go out to the site on April 2nd to, to take follow-up tests, and it was submitted on April 5th, about three days after.
Okay. All right. So, we already set this?
Okay.
It's good. May 21st.
Thought it was June 4th, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm looking at my note here, because I'm not...
You see, that's why we need you to...
No, no, the vote sheet is correct. Sorry. I'm looking at my, I'm looking at my lineup. This is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 17, 2017-309BZ, 406 Remson Avenue, Brooklyn.
So, is anyone here for this?
Did the case manager get in touch with?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I know the attorney can't make it because they're, they're in court, but the, I spoke to the wife yesterday.
And said that you have to show up.
Wanted them here.
Did they state?
It's number 17.
This, I'm not, we don't represent them anymore, but they texted me to see what number they were on, so I think they're coming.
Okay, so...
Put it on for second call.
I was just trying to be a...
We'll put it on for second and third call as necessary.
Okay, thank you, Elise.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right. Item number 18, 2018-38BZ, 1717 Richmond Road, Staten Island. Thank you. Raise your right hand, everybody? Where I can see. Hello? Oh, thank you. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the board to respond on a state board member questions? Go, go, go.
Ending out of normal set and a broken set.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. What? Thank you.
You have thought of something to say?
What's that?
You have two bubble? I don't have...
One is with a bubble? One is without a curb?
Do you have both bubble sites? I think I have two normal sites.
I don't know what they're...
Same.
Good morning. Elise Philadere from Eric Palatnick, PC. On behalf of the applicant, I'm going to first talk about the easier issues, and then we can get into traffic circulation, because I see people are nodding. You see that we've made some large changes with a possible thumbs up.
We, we see the poss, the main change very clearly, but there are other ones which we don't see.
Okay, if you want to jump in?
It's Eric Palatnick with Elise, because we're close.
Oh.
We were just joking around while you were...
Okay.
Eric Palatnick, I, I've been working very close on the traffic component of the application with the architect and the engineer. So, we, we heard your concern yesterday, and when we studied the plan again, we saw what you were saying, which would be that if an unscrupulous driver were coming into the premises, and they were anxious for Starbucks on a caffeine high, which most people are, they're going to scooch in, they're not going to circle all the way around. So, we tried to figure out a way that would block a person from doing that behavior. And what we came up with is these two dual curbs that come in from either side. We could landscape them and plant them however you want. We could put a speed bump in between them, and we could have signage. We're proposing signage on either side that says, "Do not enter," but we could add even more signage if you want, or anything to that effect. And...
Sorry, before, you said, "Landscape them any way you want."
Yeah.
Little curbs are really skinny.
They're really skinny, so, right. But what I was thinking there, we could make it decorative. I know that the board is, likes to see things decorative. We could put a, maybe a small little fence in place there with some primals that we could plant as the seasons go by, with signage on it, on the, on the fence that's facing the oncoming traffic to alert drivers that they can't enter there, just to doll it up a little bit, so to speak, to make it a little bit nicer. But we're amenable, or keep it as is. I mean, we're just trying to give ideas.
Right.
We're amenable, we're giving you the concept. We're amenable to addressing the concept, however the board would want to see it, is my point.
So, my main, I, I mean, I think this is very much in line with what we were talking about yesterday. My only concern is now, so you have all the cars coming in both to queue and to park and to go into the restaurant, right?
Right. Also, that one singular curb cut.
Yeah, and so, on the singular curb cut, but now I'm looking at, it's an 11-foot wide egress, which, you know, we talked about a gate, so it would have the same effect, but I'm just looking at, does the necking down to 11 feet wide create some kind of strange backup situation? I, I don't know.
I don't think so at all, because you don't have that much, I mean, we'd like to think it'll be the busiest shopping center in the world, but it's, I mean, you're not going to have that many people coming through, and you've already filtered out a lot of people that are coming in as, as they come into the property. They're going to park as they come in. So, you're really going to be left with this, this, either the people who are coming out from a shopping experience, and that's pretty much it, or the people that are trying to get to the three Starbucks spaces over there. The remainder of the people coming into the parking lot are going to go for the drive-thru.
So, the building that's on the right, isn't this the parking for them too?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. That's who you're going to have filtering out of people. You're not going to have a sudden onslaught of people leaving the store. I mean, they're all shopping. So, as people come out of the store, my point is that you won't have a throttling down or bottleneck there. Unless, I guess unless the store has a fire drill and kicks everybody out at the same time, but, you know, under normal shopping conditions, whatever this may be.
And your, and your Starbucks peak is different than from...
The Starbucks peak is different, plus you're not going to have the, the people that Madam Chair was concerned about. A lot of the people are for the Starbucks drive-through that are coming through there, so they're going to filter out and segregate from the people that would go through the 11-foot. Really, you're not going to have anybody going through the 11-foot ideally, except for the people that are leaving the premises.
Right. No, I'm not suggesting that anyone's going to come in that way, it, because...
No, I understood.
Very unpleasant, actually, because it's so narrow. You want to turn right.
I had Jersey drivers in mind when I was, when we were talking about it.
I know you're always going after them, so...
I, I do heavily go after Jersey. They're not, they are not a protected class, so... And Elise is from Jersey, so we can crack Jersey jokes.
I bet she's a good driver.
And we're in New York City, the greatest city that ever existed, so...
So, right, so, the drawing that, I know this was just a quick print for us, the drawing number one, that's the la, this labeled landscape plan, it's super light over here. That's just an affectation of the printing process, right?
I think it is. I think if you see it on electronic label...
Okay, because what I see on O2 is that you, I don't remember whether there was a landscaping, uh, what do you call it? Planter area that went further along. Now, it's just back, front-to-front bumpers, right? Was that the way it was before? Front-to-front bumpers?
Yeah, right.
Are you looking at the current? Yeah. Right? Right.
We didn't remove any...
Okay, so, that's the same.
We, in fact, added landscaping, which is one of the minor comments I was going to...
Okay. You added the landscaping where?
We did, um, you can look at, yeah. So, in an, in the note, right here, existing retaining wall to receive...
Microphone.
I'm sorry. Existing retaining wall to receive cascading vines from the top of the wall for the entire length of the retaining wall, which you asked for yesterday. So, that's why I said we didn't take any landscaping away. We, in fact, added landscaping.
So, they'll cascade down like waterfall?
Yes. Yeah, so if you want to read a book in your car while you wait, you can look at the cascading vines.
All right, that's good. Anybody have any other comments with this one?
And the last, just to address all your comments, the garbage is going to come at night. It's going to be kept inside. It will park on 1, 2, or 3, either space 1, 2, or 3. And there's a door right there, and the staff will take the garbage out of that door. You can see the door is on sheet 5.
When you say night, you mean at a time that's...
After hours. So, after hours, a private company will come to pick up the trash, and the staff will take it to, immediately to the garbage truck.
Sorry, so which one of these unlabeled rooms is the trash storage?
She can, she can come. Steve Gambino.
Hi, I'm Steve Gambino, the applicant, the architect on the project. On page 5, there's a space, we're, we're doing the shell building for Starbucks. That's the reason why all the labels are not on those rooms. But the space immediately to the right, which is like an alcove, is where the trash will be retained, and from that alcove, it will be brought out.
Immediately to the right, where?
Yeah, on a daily basis, because it's going to be private.
Immediately to the right, where?
Where the door is, there's a door that...
There's a bunch of doors. Which door?
There's one, there's one exterior door in the back of the building.
The one at the top?
The top of the page. That is correct.
And to the immediate right of the...
And to the immediate right of that, all the way in the corner of the building, at the upper right-hand corner, is an alcove, which is where... There's a dimension for it, 5 foot...
5 foot 3/4.
3/4 of an inch. And that alcove is where the trash is retained on a daily basis and brought out.
And how is it retained? What, is it in a cold storage?
I really don't know the method of that.
So, that's the thing. Usually, we require that perishables be stored in cold storage, right? Refrigerated storage, because stuff rots. Okay, hi. He was sworn in anyway. State your name, please.
Corey Bertram.
Okay, and what's your...
I'm the Starbucks real estate manager.
Okay. Starbucks real estate manager, okay. We need the drawing, quickly, you can maybe do this on a second call, maybe, to indicate where the cold, cold, so refrigerated storage of perishables is. The reason for that is you don't want vermin running around on the lot, because it's a hot day, and it's not stored in a refrigerated...
Well, it's stored in, it's stored in our back of house, so it's air-conditioned. It goes in the back, same, same with every single one of our stores that we have in New York. It's stored in the back of our house in trash containers.
Inside.
Air-conditioned.
Yeah, it's in, it's in our, it's in our back room. It's, so, the back room is air-conditioned. Everywhere, every, every Starbucks is stored the same way.
Okay. Okay. We'll make that a condition. Okay. Are, are there any speakers on this? Are there any other issues? Anybody else? Okay. Thank you for being responsive about our concerns on the traffic flow. All right, then. I'd like to make a motion to close. Oh, are these submitted?
I have to do second call. I will have them submitted.
Okay, second call.
With second call.
Okay. And just when you're doing the submission, make sure that, because these are super light, make sure that someone looks at the PDF before you email it.
Okay.
Because we can't, we really can't read these.
Okay, and I have the PDF, these were printed, but I have the PDF version on my computer.
All right, so we're doing second call, so she can email, she can submit these?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I will...
Okay. Item number 19, 2018-39BZ, 1249 East 23rd Street, Brooklyn. You don't have to be sworn in, because you're adjourning this, right?
Good afternoon, or good morning. Lera Albin from office of Lera Albin.
All right.
Looking up the date. If possible, we would like to have a June 4th hearing on this application with a submission three before as usual?
Nope. June 4th is an extremely terrible day.
Okay.
Okay, let's see. This is June 11. What about June 5th? 7321. Okay, how about June 25th with a June 5th submission?
We can make that happen. So, 65 and 625 with Brad?
Yes.
So, once again, it's June 25th?
June 25th hearing, June 5th submission.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Item number 20, 2018-56BZ, 83 Colwood Street, Brooklyn.
Good morning. I'm surprised that we're this far on the agenda and it's still morning. But, so, we've sorted out most of the issues with the Department of Buildings on this particular application. We should be ready to submit by the end of the month. Understand that might not be possible with the board's schedule, but with that in mind, scheduling this as soon as we can.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you. Okay, so, no, so you have to kind of, we have to accommodate our schedule, so... I guess we could also do the June 5th, June 25th, June 5th submission.
That's fine. Thank you.
Item number 21...
Just a second. We could do second call for Remson Street.
Okay, because the other one is being adjourned too, but, okay. Remson? Let's go back to Remson. So, we're second calling...
Hold on one second. What are we up to? We have a lot.
Twenty one.
Okay, I just want to make sure she's here. We're up to number 21. So what do you want to do? How many do we have?
Three.
Twenty five? No, I just want to keep them here, so just make a notation somewhere on the calendar that number, whatever number Remson is, is appearing as number 21. Okay. So we're calling, second calling the, for Remson? Yeah, just Remson. Okay, Remson is here?
Yeah.
Okay. So item number 2017-309BZ, 406 Remson Avenue, this is a second call item. Let me get the sign-in sheet, sorry. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the board, and to, and to respond honestly to board member questions? Do you sign in? Do you have the attorney here also? I just want to note also for us, because it's so hard to find these, that we're hearing, this is item 21 at 11:15 AM, 51 AM. Okay.
Good morning, board. I.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Amit Icheck. I requested an adjournment.
Right. But we can adjourn this because your reasoning for adjourning it is that you don't want to do the work, or something. So you have a responsibility of, as an owner, to maintain your property, and the way owners maintain property is if necessary, they take out loans, or they come to different business decisions about how to use the property. But at the moment, the property is not being used legally, right?
Yeah, yes.
And it needs to be improved because it's a nuisance to the neighbors. And it can't be a nuisance, you got a special approval to have this kind of a commercial use on your site, and nuisance wasn't included in that.
The nuisance, I would, I would think is gone. I, we're trying to maintain the place and keep it clean. Dogs are gone. There are no parking on the sidewalks, we try, the place has never been this clean even from the last BSA hearing, I mean, the last, 20 years ago. So the place, the site is maintained, and it's, it's cleaner, it's the cleanest it's ever been.
So you're, you have an operation that the fire department has issued violations on, where the operation is a, is a dangerous use without adequate fire protection?
All the fire department violations have been cured since last time.
We'll have the fire department speak to this, you all, because you have 20,000 plus in fines that seem to be outstanding, so let's just have the fire department come if they can speak to it. Just an attorney for the record.
My name is Andrew Dusshinsky, Fire Department, City of New York. So the inspections have been performed, task force inspections have been performed in December. During the inspection, three criminal summonses have been issued. Containers with illegal, illegal containers with flammable gas have been confiscated. One fire department summons was issued, the fire department summons have been, the proof of compliance had been submitted to the fire department, and it was accepted as complied with. In addition to, we did send referrals to Department of Building where four summonses, or violations was issued by Department of Building, and also to New York State DEC, where the five criminal summonses have been issued. So as three criminal summonses issued by the fire department, as well as New York State DEC, still be pending the court date.
Okay, so I'm trying to understand what this means in terms of what's going on at the actual site.
At the time of inspection.
But that was December.
December. All illegal flammable gas had been confiscated, so it was removed immediately at that time, so there was no danger anymore.
Okay.
For illegal storage, there was three criminal summonses that had been issued, because it was, the flammable gas was illegally stored, or illegally used at the premises. So the fire department summons, which was issued for minor items like combustible waste, again, proof of compliance had been submitted to the fire department, and the fire department accepted as a compliance.
So does that mean the fire department considers now the site to be safe?
As long as the premises will be used in according to original approval, such as hand tools use only, we have no objection.
Okay, but so the problem is, one of the uses is a muffler shop that does welding?
That's not acceptable for that specific use.
Right.
If they would like to use that, they would have to have approval from the board, and we would require to have a sprinkler system protection, and a proper insulation of combustible materials.
Right, so that's a problem.
Structural, structural of the building have to be properly insulated. But as the use, as it was originally approved, again, hand use, hand tools use only, such as change of fuel, oil, change of sparks, and minor maintenance of the cars, we would accept that, that's fine.
Right, okay. Yeah, so our problem is that the current operation is the muffler repair shop.
Which is not acceptable under that, yes.
Not acceptable, right, so there you go. So having filed, thank you, sir. So having filed the report, unless you discontinue the operation of the muffler shop that's using welding, we have a problem, right? Or you have to provide a full sprinkler system to protect the building. Right. So it's kind of, it's not an option, right? You have to do this thing, and we're not going to allow you to continue, and we can decide to deny your request to continue the use, or you have to change your operation one way or the other. Install the sprinklers, understood it's expensive, but either that, or change the tenancy. So we can't let this go on for indefinitely, we need to make a plan.
Yeah, I need to get some allocation of funds to do that, I did hire an attorney, who's going to deal with this, name's Lauren Lewis.
Is that the person you contacted? I spoke to him, yeah, unfortunately, he's in Kings County Court today, so he couldn't. No, but I thought, he said he wasn't retained. No, he said he wasn't, he wasn't too familiar with this action, but he was their attorney. Oh, okay. Yeah.
He was supposed to be here with me today, and because it said adjourned, then he went on to his other case. I, I don't know, I don't know if you see, you received my letter, I wrote a letter to the board?
Yes, we saw the letter.
I had to allocate funds elsewhere to pay other expenses of the property, and I mean, maybe, if I get a little more time, I can, I can do all these things.
So what I would recommend is that maybe you reach out to Small Business Administration or something like that to help, but we cannot allow you to continue to operate in illegal use, and I'm going to ask fire department to re-inspect. So, and the more the fire department comes, the more DOB comes, the more violations there are, and there's nothing to be done. If the operation is illegal, they issue a summons and there's no defense, because it's an illegal use, right? So it means you'll have to pay those fines. So think about that, the fines are sort of money.
Wasted.
Money down a hole, right? As opposed to the money that you might go, for instance, to installing the sprinkler, that same 5,000 could go into installing the sprinkler system. I don't know how many heads you need, maybe that's something fire department knows about.
It'd have to be designed by the professional engineer.
Sure, but I mean, there's a tend, it's a relatively small space, in your experience, do you know if it always has to come, could it come off domestic if it's a relatively small space?
At this point right now, for domestic line, you can take up to 20 sprinkler heads, however, it's going to be changed up to six, as in new addition.
But that's not out yet?
Not yet, but the 20 heads would not be sufficient for the entire shop.
Oh, 20 would not be?
I don't think so. Again, as a professional designer, we'd have to look into and see then.
Sure, sure, okay.
But technically, it is, would be high hazard occupancy, which would require to have one sprinkler head per 130 square feet.
130.
Around.
I got another question, is it, does it only have to be in the muffler shop, or does it have to be in the whole shop?
That's a, so he's not, I don't think, Mr. Dussh.
What happened is the certificate of occupancy issued for the entire premises, so you cannot make any welding, so the certificate of occupancy indicates that you can use hand tools only. So if one of the shops that you have, you know, use hand tools only, that would be fine. However, as long as you're going to start using hot work operation, that would be probably required to have the entire building.
Ah, so, but just to clarify, so the way that his building works is it's divided into three different businesses, and one business is, I don't know how many square feet that, two businesses, and I don't know how many square feet the muffler shop is, but.
At that moment, 1,000.
A thousand square feet?
At that moment.
Okay, so let's just say, there's a thousand square foot that's using welding, and the other side is not doing that kind of work.
That's the reason why the professional designer must be involved, because they would have to look at how those spaces are separated.
Separated.
Do they have firewalls or not? Again, it's very hard to say without looking at the pictures.
Right, understood. So it's possible, though, if it, if there were firewalls between them, you would be able to do it all.
Right, that's correct. If they're properly separated, and in case a fire condition happened, the fire is not going to be able to travel to another space, that would be fine. But again, professional designer must be heavily involved in that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, so you see?
I understand, it's just two different buildings, it's not.
Oh, it's even two different buildings?
It's two different, it's two different buildings.
Ah, okay, so presume, and assuming that they have the right firewalls, then?
Cinder blocks.
Cinder blocks.
Between.
Right. So as, so I would suggest from a business point of view, really, that it's cheaper to go find out right now how to comply with fire department for your tenant, and then actually probably, yeah, and find out whether, how many sprinkler heads would be required, and whether you can do that off domestic, which just means you can use your existing, right?
I understand.
It might turn out to be worth the trouble.
Yeah. No, because I spoke to an engineer already, they want me to put a backfill preventer, and they just came here to kill the spray. So I mean, if I could do it off the domestic, then I will do it.
Right, so you should be contacting a sprinkler consultant, not, I don't know who you talk to.
A plumber.
Okay, please do that. All right, are there speakers on this? Yeah, did you have, sorry?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that, I was personally at the premises, and we did confiscate flammable liquid, flammable propane or flammable gases from three occupancies, so I don't know.
From three different locations?
Right, we, that's the reason why three different criminal summonses have been issued.
It wasn't just the muffler shop, you're saying?
No, it's not. It was, in each shop, we have some issues, one of them has a space heaters, which is illegal, and some of them has propane.
Anyone else have propane or acetylene or any flammable gas? Not the space heater, anyone else using a torch or, or any flammable gas?
At that location?
Outside of the muffler shop, any other location using a torch or other flammable?
When we was there at the inspection, at the time of the inspection, we did not observe anyone physically using that.
Anyone have the tools to use that, at the other locations outside of the muffler?
We did not see that, no.
Okay, so only the muffler shop?
Muffler shop, we showed it, yes.
Okay, and the other one had space heaters?
One of them has space heaters, and the other one has a lot of propene.
A lot of?
Propene.
Propane tanks?
Some mixed with propene, yes.
Are you talking, is that the propane tank for the barbecue, or?
It's a mixed off, we confiscated, let me see.
They submitted a letter to the records.
Right, we did submit a letter, and that letter indicates, let me see, how many in total tanks? 11 20-pound cylinders, one 5-pound cylinders, two 20-pound cylinders, and six 33.5-pound cylinders. That was the propane, and we have three tanks of 100 pounds with acetylene flammable gases.
Okay, so the acetylene's obviously for a torch.
That's correct, yes.
And that was not at the muffler shop, that's at a different location?
Acetylene wasn't, no, acetylene was at body shop, that's what we.
Okay.
Oh, and body shop.
And we have, they did have a body shop, as well as they have a muffler shop, so we confiscated from both. One cylinder, we took from one, and two from the other.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any speakers on this? No? No, nothing from neighbors? Okay. This is Remson? No? All right. Okay, so what I would like you to do is contact a sprinkler person to talk to them about what you might be able to do in some way that's affordable. You may have to be looking into getting a business loan, because you need to take care of this, or you're going to lose these uses.
I know.
Okay? So. What are we up to? How about you come back to us in the end of June, June 25th? Okay? And to the extent that you can give us any, any materials to show the progress that you've made, and you said that you cleaned up the site and so on, send us some photographs, okay? So the extent you can show that you've been working on this, send us photographs and a letter to say what you've accomplished, and so June 25th, and submit that to us by June 5th, okay?
Have you had, have you had any conversations with the neighbors?
Yeah, I speak to them all the time, I mean, they're cold, they just don't like my dogs.
And right now, would you say they're supporting you at this point?
Well, I'm sure if I call them, I don't think there's a problem.
It'd be great to hear from them.
The same attorney, I speak to him?
Their attorney.
Their attorney, he's a neighbor over there.
Right.
His parents live there.
Yeah, right, I know, yeah. So, so part of it is, of course, the neighbor's complaint wasn't just about the dogs.
The backyard, the backyard was horrible, the backyard, right? Yeah, so the backyard is still locked, and nobody goes in.
Okay, so we need to see photographs of it?
I'll get you photographs.
And then I'd like also our compliance officer to take another visit there, so fire department, please do another inspection? Okay. All right then, so that's, that's it, so you have, you have the date to come back, right? And you have to come back, you can't adjourn it, okay? Understood?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Do you want his attorney to come with him the next time, or?
Yeah.
Sure, I mean, I think your attorney will understand some things and be able to explain them to you, so it's probably a good idea for your attorney to come. Yeah. That's. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Keep going? No, we're going to take a 10-minute break. 10-minute break? All right. Okay, we're back on the record, ladies and gentlemen, Mike Son. Okay, we're back on the record. Item number 21 on the zoning calendar, 2018-104BZ, 1234 1238 East 22nd Street, Brooklyn. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the board, and respond honestly to board member questions? Oh wait, this is immediately adjourned, so keep going. What?
This is.
No? No, this is, no?
Yeah, I have no point of having hearings.
Oh, that's what I said, yeah, yeah, that's the, right, right. Incomplete submission. Incomplete submission, right? Yeah. Have a discussion? No, no, wasted time. So we'll just put this on for. Would it be possible to have a hearing on May 21st? No. May 21st is impossible. Suppose we could put it on for June 4th? What if people think about that on the 4th day? Yeah, so June 4th with a May 15 submission. June 4th, May 15? Yeah. Thank you very much. Item number 22, 2018-109BZ, 9-03 44th Road, Queens. So everyone who's going to make a presentation, raise your right hands for our concealer, please. Thank you. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and to respond honestly to board member questions? Okay, please proceed. You can sign up when you come up to speak. And, Mark, sworn 22.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners, actually, good afternoon. My name is Ariel Holzer from Goldman Harris. I represent the applicant, Borough Management, and Arwo Neighborhood Charter Schools. With me today is Scott Barone and Andrew Epstein from Borough Management, Mark Crisante and Florence Adu from Arwo Neighborhood Charter School, I also have Joseph Sultana from The Architect on the Project, and Amber Cartalian, who's our traffic analyst, and Mark Robbins, who's overall environmental analyst here today. I was at the review session yesterday and heard the board's comments. The architect worked quickly to try to make plans that are responsive to the board's many comments on, on the plans. They are not quite ready for prime time, but I'd be happy to hand them out for reference in our discussion. You want to give it to me? Thank you. We'll be making a formal submission later this week after we can make sure that the plans are perfect and ready. If I could quickly run through the comments of the board. The commissioner asked about the four foreign language classrooms. I will ask Mark Crisante from the school to speak more deeply on that, but I'll just note that the schedule was the elementary school schedule only, did not include the middle school. I understand that now, besides offering Spanish, they also have Mandarin Chinese, and so there's a greater need for additional foreign language classrooms. Mark?
Please state your name. Good afternoon, my name is Mark Crisante, I'm the Director of External Relations with our World Neighborhood Charter Schools. So as Mr. Holzer just pointed out, we do offer Spanish beginning in kindergarten, but by grade four, our students have the option of taking Mandarin, and then once they get into middle school, you have sort of the daily offerings of Mandarin as well as Spanish in three sections. We also just add, have just recently become a candidate school for IB, for International Baccalaureate, which that may in fact, we may be adding after we get our certificate of candidacy, either French or Latin. But that is a two-year process, and we have to work with the International Baccalaureate Organization to obtain the certification.
So can, what I was trying to understand is there are four language classrooms, so the first part of the question is, are they strictly language classrooms, or are those multipurpose rooms?
They're strictly language classrooms.
Strictly language, okay, and so are they set up with some kind of listening? No?
No, they're gonna have smart boards, so interactive smart boards. We don't use the traditional headphone usage like, like I was in elementary school.
Okay, so if you're, if we just talk about, so is grade four when language study moves into full earnest or?
So it actually is Spanish, kindergarten to begin with. So there, you have kindergarten, Spanish, all the way up to grade four, and then Mandarin and Spanish.
Oh, it's both?
Yes, and then when they get to middle school, six through eight, they're gonna have it on a daily basis.
Okay. So I, I think one of the questions was how you're filling up the room. So if the kids are until grade four only having one hour of Spanish a week, then how is that filling up a class? The way they're labeled?
Sure.
Is they're devoted to a group of levels, right?
Right.
So if you're only having one class per week, then it doesn't feel like you're filling up the classrooms and maybe that's not how you're using them, so, right?
Right, so we have, we have different sections. So because we have about 720 students, that'll go K through eight, you have three sections of every grade level. So that in fact, you'll have a kindergarten with three sections, you'll have a first grade with three sections and all of that. That's how they're gonna be utilized.
Don't go too far away, I think there might be other questions about that. Maybe sit in the front?
Stick around.
Sit there in just in case we have other.
There was a question regarding the security apparatus at the third floor and not at the second floor and why that was. I believe that was an error. We have new security plans that will detail better security. And I thank, I thank the BSA staff for sending us those plans as illustrative to help our architect in terms of putting that together.
Is the architect actually here?
Yes, he is.
Yeah, maybe let's have a little conversation because that may not be something they're familiar with.
Please state your name for the record.
Joe Sultana, GLS Designs.
Okay. So in terms of the security, our staff sent you a sample of plans where it's showing how, how in other schools that are in commercial buildings, we isolate the different access points so that stranger adults can't access the school. And so school kids can't kind of wander into office spaces, you know, commercial office spaces. So for example, we have the children entering the lobby and presumably using this fire stair, that's what was mentioned yesterday, right? There's one fire stair in the school lobby, which is a little bit confusing about how it is rendered on the drawings, whether that's a fire stair that's, that's required egress for the whole building or whether it's just being devoted for the school. And if it's for the whole building, then you need to have security to prevent adults who are not school-related from egressing onto the school floors.
Okay, so the?
No, even more than that. Basically from them not using that staircase except in a fire emergency.
The staircase in the lobby is exclusive only for the school. So it continues from the ground floor all the way to the, to the top of the building.
And it doesn't release on any floor where?
Doesn't release on any of the floors, except for the school floors.
Okay.
Okay, and that's permitted by fire code that you have a stair, a fire stair that doesn't have, have any access from the second or third floor?
We submitted these drawings from the last submission to the fire department. We have an approval from the fire department. We also have an extra staircase that's gonna be used exclusively from the school, from the fourth floor to the seventh floor.
I understand that the convenience stair, I'm focused, the convenience stair is obviously isolated, no one else can get to it.
This staircase is completely, completely isolated. It's only used for the school.
So there's two staircases that are exclusively used for the school?
That's correct.
One from four to seven and the other fire steps that are only used for the school?
That's correct.
But the staircase, that's the fire stair. Does it mean there won't be a door onto two or three?
There are two more exit staircases.
Right, understood, but let's just stay with that one.
No, that's it.
There were no doors on two or three?
That's correct.
Okay.
So I think the drawing needs to be corrected. The third floor plan shows no doors, but the second floor does show, and in this one, the second floor plan is not included, so I cannot confirm that, but?
On the new set of drawings we just, you just handed out now, there's a whole set of drawings that we prepared only for security.
Ah, I see, okay, so that's why the second floor was not shown, okay, understood.
Oh, okay, so when you're showing the secure, we need all the drawings? All the floors? So when you do the security drawings, it includes all the floors specifically, right?
And they're color-coded and they're all labeled and there's a legend for every single piece of security equipment that we're using.
Okay, okay, so, but you said you didn't include the second floor here?
Second floor is included on the new set we just submitted.
I don't see it.
No, it's not in here.
It's on the back, it's a.
Towards the end, two and two?
It's the last set of plans. So the whole building is there.
Oh, I see.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, I see it. All right, so it's showing no door on the second floor and no door on the third floor. Okay, so and then, so to, so to be clear, we're, we're doing two forms of protection, right? So children can enter the, the building fire stairs?
For an emergency home.
Only for emergency, and that adults who are not related to the school can enter the fire stairs and egress.
Okay.
Right, okay.
In emergency, it was, my mistake, was it the magnet that they have when the fire alarm rings that opens those doors?
Say again, what?
But you said they can only get out during, in an emergency from the other side?
Yes.
It sets off an alarm.
It's the alarm with the magnet?
You can't lock the doors, but it sets off an alarm if you open them. We also, it's typical that we have cameras in those fire stairs?
We have cameras on those.
So security will see the strangers wandering or children in the staircase. Okay, and then the other question, which is, I don't know how you solve it architecturally, frankly, is my concern about the, or the entrance on 44th Avenue to the office building. It's right next to the lobby for the school and, or, you know, it's a distance from it, but when the kids are loading into the buses and so on, they're all standing in front of the entrance to this office building. And my question is, how do we isolate the exposure?
I discussed this with, with the building owner and he confirmed to me that this, even though it's incorrectly marked on the plans, that will be changed. This will only be emergency exit only and will not be a commercial entrance. I understand that the freight elevator is near there, there's a corridor and there's access from the loading docks at freight elevator. The freight elevator, being at that location, is a holdover from the original building design before the school addition, so it's there, but that's not, that entrance will not be used for commercial activities except the emergency exit from those fire stairs. And we'll put signage and have, we'll have it locked from the outside in the same way.
So I, I'm not getting it though because you have this very, very long corridor you're walking down. So if you could drive up on 44th Avenue and park your car wherever you can park your car, I actually don't know how that part works, or you walk from forty to 44th Avenue from public transit, you're gonna be forced to walk around the block to the entrance on 44th Road?
Correct, correct. It was not, it's not going to be used for commercial purposes.
Okay, so the plans have to indicate that that's an emergency egress only?
Correct.
And so, and that, that elevator is still going to be in use? You have to?
It will be in use, it's by, it's a key card freight elevator. It was, as I said, it was a holdover from the original building design. It can't, at this stage, it can't really be moved, but they can access from the corridors and from the loading bays and that's its use.
Okay, so it's a freight elevator?
Correct.
Is the elevator already installed? Yes. So how does it actually, does this work? So the loading bays are on 10th Street. How do they get their goods inside? What?
Also on 9th Street.
No, I know, but how do they, if they're offloading from the loading docks to get materials into the second or the third floor?
So the, the original building?
We have to stay in the details.
Scott Barone, developer, owner. So the original three-story design anticipated that we have the potential for some of, for a prospective tenant who would take a warehouse bay to additionally want storage space on, say, the second or third floor.
Right.
So this freight elevator was even originally designed with key-carded access only because it's expensive to run. It's, it's got a big motor in it, so you wouldn't just let people use it going up and down anyway. So somebody's gonna get actually back billed for electrical usage if they're using it on a regular basis. We put it into a building management system.
Okay.
So it wouldn't make sense where if somebody was to leave their office, they would have to, let's say they have one of the offices on the north side of the building to take that freight elevator? It's gonna be slow and it's gonna cost them money, so I'm sure they're gonna control who has access to those proxy cards.
Okay.
So the main building lobby, like the pretty commercial entrance, is at the far south side of the building. So if a tenant or somebody that works for a tenant was to park north of the building, they're still only coming in and out through 44th Avenue.
Right.
Or 44th Road, excuse me.
Okay, understood, but you have these loading docks and so how's this work? You, you load on from 10th Street into the loading dock that's, say, in the middle?
Correct.
And you wanna deliver goods to the second floor?
So you've got, we've got a six-foot wide concrete commercial corridor with steel paneling on the walls in the commercial building below. You'll take a pallet jack or a small skid steer or something like that. You'll come down to the freight elevator, put your material into the freight elevator and bring it up into the building above.
So you're gonna go down the corridor through the double doors and all that stuff?
Correct.
Into the freight elevator?
Correct.
Okay, or arguably, so, but the reality is they won't wanna do that, right? They're gonna wanna go to 10th Street and then hang a lift on 44th Avenue and go right into the commercial lobby, right into the service elevator?
They're not gonna have the ability to do that with any large freight because we've got a grade change there. There's a few steps or an ADA ramp and they're, they wouldn't be able to get large, it just wouldn't logistically make sense. You'd have to unload a pallet and we're not gonna let them do that because we're building a nice lobby and we don't want pallet jacks coming through, you know, expensive stone floors and wood-paneled walls.
What do you mean, you're buil, you're building a nice lobby at the 44th Avenue?
The 44th Road.
No, I'm talking about 44th Avenue.
Oh, okay, so you're saying if somebody was to have goods delivered, well, first and foremost, they'd be in trouble with the landlord. Secondly, there's not a viable curb cut to do it there because we do not have a, there's a curb cut for the school entrance right here, but they'd have to illegally pull up onto the street, park the truck on the sidewalk, have somebody come around from inside the, just logistically would be very problematic.
And I'm assuming if they are paying for their own loading area, they would want to?
Use their own loading area, correct.
Right, I'm just looking at how, even if you pulled into the loading area, now you're gonna carry the goods on the pallet down the corridor?
That's gonna be your only option and it will be spelled out in their lease.
You know, you spent all this money on your fancy lobby, you're not spending money on the fancy corridor?
As, no, we designed the corridor in such a way that it was more commercial. So we wanted to have the flexibility of uses where if somebody took, was a more industrial style tenant, let's say, and rented a warehouse, they have the ability to use if they took additional space on the second or third floors, whatever they want. The lobby, which if you're more of like, let's call it an office or a flex space or an architect-type user or something like that, would come in the nice lobby on 44th Road, the passenger elevator is right there, you'd go up into the second or third floor.
Okay, so you would never go down that corridor?
Correct.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm not sure, some of this I think may have been covered. As the board noted, we have instructions from a letter FDNY. The new plans will mirror those instructions in terms of signage and no fire drills on the, on the convenience stair. The board also noted that there was no doorways on the convenience stairs from the fifth through ninth floor. That was at, as per FDNY instructions. That's why that, that was designed that way. The, there was an additional question about the elevators going to the roof, the roof of the building, which was not being used for, for the school purposes, of any purpose. That will be changed, only one elevator will go to the roof, it will only be for maintenance purposes only.
Why does an elevator need to go to the roof for maintenance purposes? We never see elevators go to a roof for maintenance purpose, unless you're gonna use the roof, and that's the whole point. If we're going to use the roof, it's not to say you can't use the roof for the school, but then the environmental assessment statement has to consider that and it's not.
Understood completely. The reason is because the elevators for the school are actually designed very large in case they needed to move large groups of students. We have 10 by 15 elevators there, so they're great sized essentially. The school HVAC system is a VRF system, a variable refrigerant flow. So you're actually working with reasonably small-sized condensing units for the HVAC. So in the event that over the term of a 32-year lease, if one of those HVAC units burns out, it'll be a lot more cost-effective and less problematic for the school and for us as ownership to essentially take one of those small four-by-four HVAC units, put it inside a freight elevator, bring her up to the roof and bring the bad one back down.
Don't you just usually put it on top of the elevator and then, then it gets offloaded from the mechanical room?
I'm sorry?
They put heavy equipment on top of the elevator and they bring it up. And then there are the access panels?
It would because you wouldn't want, usually you don't have an elevator big enough to handle it. We have an elevator that's big enough to fit a car inside of. It's just a lot easier to wheel it right in on a skid and bring it up, especially when you're dealing with a small unit.
Right, but so now I have a problem with the idea that now we have access by the, a school elevator to the roof and we haven't studied the possibility that it becomes a play area for the roof, for the, for the school?
Okay.
Noise, environmental?
I mean, the elevators are locked out, they don't have, the school kids don't have access to the elevators. They're, they have it, but it's by key-card access only. They don't let the kids use the elevators on a condition as that.
No, the teachers have the access.
Correct.
No, so the, the point is this, we see a lot of schools, right? And we, they're often in manufacturing districts and often the, the air quality analysis indicates that it's not actually safe to have a playground on the roof.
Okay.
So we say you can't have an elevator stop at the roof because the environmental analysis forbids it.
Right.
Right?
We would be okay if you wanted to make it conditional that we don't have any type of play access or anything like that.
The problem with conditions is we have to go check on you all the time. That doesn't work out.
Fair enough.
So we try to make the architecture speak instead.
Okay.
Right? Hence, architecture speaking says no elevator stopping in the roof, which is the most typical.
I can make this even easier. We can delete the elevator to the roof.
Yes.
We were just trying to think ahead, but no problem.
Good answer.
Okay.
That's what happens when you have to come to a government agency for approvals, right?
Okay, I'm glad that was clear. Moving right along, there's a question about how lunch would work in terms of the moving the food. The food is, is being catered and brought in, it'll be brought in before school hours. There is a servery next to the cafeteria where the food is kept. There will be three or four different lunch shifts, beginning at, I think, around 11:45 and running till, the school can sit better on that, but running till around 2 o'clock. And after that, the food is taken, the, the garbage is taken from the servery to the elevators and down to the cold storage. Pickup is after-school hours. As I said, drop-off is before-school hours, pickup of garbage is after-school hours to not interfere with school operations. And that's why there is that curb cut there in order to efficiently load, load and unload materials and the daily deliveries of lunches.
So that curb cut is for?
The school use.
No, I understood, but the curb cut goes into, it's really hard to see what that label was, hold on a second. The curb cut takes you into something called receiving, right? Is that an actual drive-in loading dock that a truck will back up into? Yeah, don't go so far away, we have lots of questions.
It's not a loading dock, it's at-grade. The curb cut in the garage door were planned and actually built in place prior to us coming to the table with the school. And since the, you know, the bulk of the school, the exception of the lobby is on the fourth floor and starts above, we figured it made sense for them to be able to keep that space for a delivery of materials, school books, furniture, their, you know, prepared lunches on a daily basis. So we kept the space, we, one of the elevators is designed as a rear door elevator as well, so it's got two-sided elevator access.
Right.
So basically food will be, the, a truck could in concept back in. I think from a practice standpoint, I don't think food delivery truck will actually back in because their deliveries are relatively small. They come in in like hot bags essentially and stuff like that.
Wow, with that many kids, hot bags?
Yeah. So they'll put them on probably, I would imagine, some type of rolling rack that would be inside the receiving space, put it on the racks, bring it up and roll it right in. And if you flip to the sixth floor? And if you flip to the sixth floor, the servary, which is a warming cafeteria only that's been designed for the cafeteria, is immediately adjacent to the elevators. So it's easy to bring food in, get it hot inside the servary, prepare it, and then when you're bringing food waste and rubbish out, it just has to go five or six feet to get into the elevator, come back down, dump into the refrigerated trash storage room, and then after hours, pick up for trash storage.
Great. Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Do you need those two elevators for the school?
You know, by code, no. We overdesigned because the concept was if that if teachers were gonna move kids in a large volume, let's say they're going out for a class trip or something like that, you want it to be able to cleanly move them downstairs, and also with 720 students, you'll probably wind up with at least 5% of the kids with some type of ADA issue. You don't wanna have them queued up waiting to have to use it. Let's have the ability to move them when you need to move them in large groups.
My reason for asking that question was if you didn't need it, would you then make one of the elevators... And this is to access the roof for your emergency purposes, to kind of close it out during... And use it only for off-hours?
It's too much what we can't control.
Right.
Mostly, we don't see elevators stop at roofs. Everybody has a chiller on the roof, et cetera, et cetera, right? So they don't stop. The ones that we see, right? Doesn't mean that as-of-right projects that don't come here do differently. Okay, I did have... You might have mentioned it already, Mr. Holtz, or sorry if I missed it, about the "don't go far." About the doors of... This is really the question for the architect, about the doors on the interior convenience stair. The drawings, again, don't show any doors.
Right. That was as per the fire department's instructions. They did not want doors on that convenience stair.
Okay, so it's not considered a shaft? Come... Yeah.
Good afternoon, everyone. Again, this is Andrew Dusshinsky, Fire Department. I just wanna clarify to board as well as to people here that design and construction requirements for structural constructions, means of egress is not under the Fire Department review and approval. When we're looking at any means of egress or any shaft, we're looking from operation point of view. How would that affect occupants of the building? How would that affect firefighters during the fire condition? And how would they be used during the fire conditions itself? So we cannot say... And that's the reason why, if you can take a look at letter with conditions, we specifically indicated that the shafts have to be constructed in accordance with construction codes, including the building code. We do not say how it have to be constructed because, again, it's not under our jurisdiction. It's not under our approval. So you would have to look into Chapter 7, which specifically indicates how the shaft have to be constructed. So from operation point of view, we do not have a problem to have...
That's a different question.
...to have that access stairwell. However, we count that as a shaft, which connects seven or eight doors, which it is our understanding that the shaft would be enclosed with at least two of our rated walls, that all openings that you have would be provided with at least 90 minutes doors, which would be self-closing doors or automatic closing doors. If you're gonna provide with self-closing doors, those doors have to be normally in closed position. If you will provide with automatic doors, you can have that. That's fine, as long as they're gonna be closed upon addition of smoke detection systems. What we provided or what we required to install additional signs, that's not an exit. The reason why, based on our discussion, this is most likely the only stairwell that will be used on a daily basis. And as we know, in case of fire condition happen now, where are we gonna go? The area that we use. So we wanna ensure that even though you're gonna use that stairwell on a daily basis, the students as well as the occupants of the building would know for sure this is not an exit, and in case of emergency happened, this door should not be used. So again, based on what I explained, the... Again, the shafts have to be properly... Convenience stairwell have to be properly provided with enclosures, doors, and doors have to be self-closing or automatic closing. Now, design and installation would have to be under Department Building Review and Approval. Maintenance, we will come in on annual basis, and we're gonna verify that, yes, it is properly maintained or not. So yes, the doors have to be provided in conjunction to the building code.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I wanna bring a couple more items because, again, I was confused, as you, yesterday about the stairwells by going through the plans. It is hard to understand. I just wanna bring it up. So it is my understanding that the stairwells exits, again, it's gonna be designed under Department Building Regulations.
Yes.
It's not under the Fire Department. As well as, it is my understanding they're gonna be on a fail-safe system, meaning that they're gonna be locked from stairwell side, which is acceptable by the building code. However, they would have to provide all required signage on occupancy side, on stairwell side, as well as, since this is a high-rise building, they would require to provide a phone every five floors on the stairwell side. That's the new requirements that we have since 2014, in case if a person got locked out in the stairwell, he won't be able to communicate.
Good idea, instead of banging.
Right, that's the requirements. And that's the reason why we are referenced to design and installation, Department Building Code, so we have to follow that from agency.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So I think there need to be doors. I mean, this isn't really our domain, but it sounds like... This is, for me, growing up, this is a shaft that's multiple levels, and otherwise you would need to do some sort of like amazing rain screen or water protection.
We can add fire doors to the shaft. We're also planning on sprinkling this one's particular staircase.
Okay.
Where egress staircases don't have sprinkling.
Right, understood.
So we're planning on doing that in this shaft. But if there's doors that we need to add that have to be connected to the fire alarm, then something up.
Okay. Okay.
And I just wanna confirm. So if the door's gonna be in open position for convenience purposes, the sign we're asking you to put when the door is gonna shut down, before getting into stairwell, you would have to see a sign. This is not an exit. That's important part.
I think we've addressed already that there will have the signage as per FDNY instructions. The board asked about some of the signs on the plans. The metro station, that is a Con Ed gas regulator. It looks kind of like a pole station. We'll send a picture in to the board. They could see exactly what it is. Not exactly sure what it's used for, but I guess Con Edison knows. Then there's dots at the corner. Those are utility poles. There is a key, actually, on the 8208, but...
It didn't make it on two hours, so that's why.
Okay.
Or maybe if it was way later, I never look way later. I look at the beginning.
Right. So we'll change the order of the plans to make it... The key should be up front, so...
Utility.
Yeah. So those are utility poles.
Okay.
In terms of... The board asked about flood zone compliance. We will be submitting the full DOB-approved plan set, so you can see exactly what was approved. We'll also send in any materials regarding the approval, though I believe we already submitted, but I will resubmit the plan examiner's approval from the Borough Commissioner, from the Deputy Borough Commissioner Ho, which I'll resubmit, but...
No, I didn't... So on the required item checklist, it said something called flood zone compliance, and flood zone design certification were provided. Those must be a document of some kind to show that you're complying. That sounds... Maybe it's an expediter question.
We prepared a document to resubmit it to the Building Department. The first floor of the warehouse is already above the floodplain. The only thing that crosses through the floodplain would be the pit for the sewer.
Okay.
That's it.
It's just that we normally require a special approval, like, let's say, a clear approval from the Department of Buildings, that the question about floodplain compliance has been addressed. Since your building's already in construction, you've gone through the review. We just wanna see what it was that DOB considered when they signed off on flood zone compliance. And so under the required items on the DOB checklist, it actually makes reference to flood zone compliance, like a document, and flood zone design certification document, which were all submitted on a certain date. So you must have handed something in, and they agreed, and therefore gave you a permit, right? So if we could have that.
Okay, I'll review the architect and also check the expediter, and we will submit...
Okay, yeah, maybe an expediter question.
Right. I believe that the other comments were directed to the status of the environmentals. I have the environmental experts to speak on that. We also sent in a memorandum this morning, just updating the status. If I could call on Mark Robbins just to speak about the status of the air quality and noise review.
I'm gonna speak on the...
Come up first, yeah, and introduce yourself.
Mark Robbins, Hydratech. I'm gonna speak upon the engineering controls that we had designed. We had prepared a remedial action plan for submittal on March 6th. Subsequent to that submittal, we received a copy of a March 14th letter requesting the actual remedial action plan and specifying key elements that should be included in the plan. With the exception of one bullet point, all of those are included in the remedial action plan. The only aspect that's not included in the current remedial action plan is the post-mitigation air testing. So we will include that protocol and resubmit the remedial action plan.
Okay. Yeah, we note, it seems like what I call getting crossed in the mail. DP, you reviewed your February 1 submission...
Right.
...and sent it out, not realizing you had a March 6 submission. So they were responding to February 1 and didn't know.
So this memorandum brings it up to current speed.
Okay.
And we'll resubmit that rap.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Amber Cartalian can address the status of traffic if the board wants to get an update.
Hello, everybody. Amber Cartalian, Equity Environmental. So we received a DOT letter a while back, I think it was maybe October, sometime around then, asking us to reevaluate our... The factors that we use for our traffic analysis. Previously, we had used the Brownsville Ascend mode split as a... Basically, a previous project to use. And so we actually collected Department of Education automate the school's Office of People Transportation data for the existing own middle school and own elementary school. And we use that data to... That dataset provides the students that at the existing school location utilize either yellow school bus services or metro card services through the DOE Office of People Transportation. And we backed into that by using a complete roster of all students to identify which of them are within a half-mile of the existing locations to determine the percent distribution of those who walk or take subway or utilize yellow school bus. We have revised the traffic analysis accordingly and also produced a trip assignment to determine what we're looking at in terms of vehicular pedestrian levels of service. And that has been resubmitted to DOT for review. We have not yet received school safety.
So they responded that they're a little delayed, but they're gonna try... The school safety division is going to try to get on it and send comments. So they sent a response this morning to follow up.
Great, okay.
Okay.
Okay. So, but they didn't give us a sense of time? No? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, and I just wanna note, because I talked about it at the hearing, the submission from Hydratech indicates that the vapor barrier and subslapped pressurization system had been installed, and that was the thing about the memos getting crossed in the mail. So it is actually there, and the building's up to the third floor, but the work was done. Right? Okay. All right. Are there speakers on this one? No? Okay, this is 44th Road? No speakers? Okay. All right, then. So we have a few things. So the plans need some... You're still working on them, but they continue to need some adjustments to respond to the security issues, remove the elevator, et cetera, et cetera, right?
Right. We do think we can get them in before next week, but we think it can be done rather quickly.
Okay, but it's environmental that's really the issue.
Environmental, it will...
The latest promise date that I have from other agencies...
Speak louder.
The latest promise date I have from an agency is May 1st.
May 1st.
But I don't know how long DOT will take.
Right.
But that's the latest one.
Okay, and that's more of an internal turnaround in the sense of your environmental people submit as they're getting the comments, right? So it doesn't have to do with a submission deadline for us.
Correct. We would appreciate an earlier date and then maybe just clear up all your issues, and then if the... Hopefully, things are clarified in the rental side. If not, you know, that could be handled separately, but we'd prefer an earlier date if possible.
No, so there aren't that many open issues on the drawings. I don't see the reason for all those consultants to come here just to say hi.
They want to see you.
The owner appreciates that, see? Try not to spend all of his money all at once. Okay. So, yeah. So I would say let's try the... Something, May 1st was there earliest. How about we try something like in mid... Sorry, just a second. So I don't think there's actually a lot for... I'm just looking at it in terms of other things. There's not a lot for us to review. Oh, in terms of the changes to the drawings, this is a request to the architect, please submit one set of bubble drawings that are just showing where the changes are in discrete bubbles. So I really appreciate it you not bubbled the entire page. So it's really just, what did I change, right? And then the drawings need to be dated with your most recent revision date, and then a clean set of drawings without the bubble, okay? And then with respect to any changes to the materials we already have, if your cover letter could say on page five, we changed... On page five of the statement of facts, for example, we changed the following thing, right? So it's easy for us to find the changes. That makes the review easier for us, okay?
And, I'm sorry, Ms. Holtz, just as sign-offs come in from the other agencies, just that the final EAS be submitted?
Right. Yes, yes.
Yeah, of course, right. So I don't know that there'll be any physical changes. What? What'd you say?
They have to wait until the end for all the sign-offs.
Yes. Well, that's what he's saying. So to wait for the end and then incorporate into the EAS whatever the directions are by the other agencies is the point. So I'm kind of thinking we're looking at... We're looking at a May... At a June 4 hearing with a May 15 submission.
Is it possible to get it into May?
We have a really difficult hearing on May 21. And I don't think you'll wanna be here for the whole day with it.
We wouldn't mind May 7.
May 7 is too early. May 7, you won't have all of the sign-offs and the EAS submitted. It'll just end up paying for consultants to come to adjourn.
If you're... If you're...
If you're, if you're, for a while on May 21, if that's the case, I got a little squishy in there.
What happens? What?
Our client would prefer that in May 21, he wouldn't mind sitting through a long hearing as he has a timetable to meet, to meet in terms of opening and time.
Ah, what is the opening in, first, the September?
September of 21, but it's a lot of building to build. We don't want to push ourselves up against the deadline.
Yes. September of 21.
Actually, no, you know what? I'm sorry, I'm thinking the wrong thing. They want to transition the middle school students mid-year, so in, on January 1 of 2021. We've got 82,000 square feet of building to add to the upper floors of the building.
I can't do me.
Every week helps.
That's fair.
May 21 is not a good day to do.
June 4.
June, yeah, I'm sorry. We just don't have a, it's only a two-week difference for you and it makes a big difference for us.
Okay.
So June 4 and a May 15 submission of the drawings, okay?
Okay, got it.
But meanwhile, you're going back and forth with the agent, the.
Correct.
Review agencies, the environmental agencies.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
June 4, May 15.
1018.
1018.
Item number, you okay?
Just a second, just a second.
Microphone okay?
Okay.
Item number 23, 2018, 116 BZ, 1982 Utica Avenue, Brooklyn.
Oops. I put it in for the.
Raise your right hand.
Are you the one speaking?
It's supposed to be May 21.
Do you affirm to sell the two, the whole, there's another two, you test one before the board, pause, and go on to questions.
Yes.
Oh, we already know the adjournment? No, 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 those are adjourned from another day.
Oh.
That's how they got there. See, it means adjourned drawing. Okay.
That's okay. Hello, good afternoon. Eric Pilatnik.
I apologize.
Utica Avenue, gas station, 73211. Elise has with her plans that address a lot of the comments that the board made yesterday, which she's going to pass up while I'm speaking, but specifically it's got the planting in it. Well, that was really the main thing, was the planting.
Thank you.
The, the reason why, and also the fencing, they speak to the fencing, to say that that's satisfactory. The reason why I'm presenting is because we heard your review session yesterday and we've been talking to our client. And there were, we think, I think there's a little bit of a misunderstanding. There's three conditions that are at issue that I think the board is interested in imposing based upon our review session yesterday, one of which is eliminating having no beer sales. The second is restricting the hours of operation. And the third is the car wash, which we've already quasi agreed to, but our client is a little frustrated and disappointed. So I just was hoping we could just talk to you for a second about the conditions. And the theory of, of the discussion that I'd like to have with you is that we think that the conditions that you're seeking to, or you would indicate you'd like to see here, and which the community board put in their recommendation, we think those are a cut and paste copy from the 2002 approval, which allowed for a big convenience store to be there.
I, I hear what you're saying. They're the one who writes the resolution. They said in their resolution that they reiterate all of the recommendations from their last, the conditions from their last.
Their last approval, I know.
So if you want to speak to them about amending their resolution, that's your business, but we, we go by what it says on their recommendation.
Of course, but if that were the case, and if your board adhered to every single recommendation of the community board, it wouldn't be that way. So of course, it's advisory, their recommendation.
Right.
And sometimes they're not as savvy and as educated as your board, which are experts in this.
Oh.
And we have a feeling that when they were doing their paperwork, because Elise was at the hearing herself and she could testify to this, that they did not make the distinction that in 2002, there was a proposal to come in and take the 400-foot convenience store and turn it into 2,400 square foot convenience store. And that the reaction in 2002, when convenience stores had just been introduced in the New York City area three years early at that point, and the board was still grappling, and the city was still grappling with TPPN, Technical Policy and Procedure Notice 10 of 99, which gave everybody direction of how to handle convenience stores. Because even though now in 2019, 20 years later, they're common as the shoes on my feet, in 201999, they were a brand new concept. And as somebody who's at many of these hearings, and if you go back into your own board's records for the time period, you'll see there was a vigorous debate at that time period. Everybody didn't, couldn't conceptualize how a convenience store that was automobile-related could sell alcohol. And it's silly, because of course, we have Costco that sells alcohol and drugstores and all these other things sell beer. But back then, the thinking that when I was at many meetings was that people were afraid that you were going to, you were going to make it so easy to get beer that you were going to influence drunk driving as a result of it. So therefore, the people were going to be able to come to a gas station, buy beer, and they were going to drive drunk. That was the logic that I had heard. It had never been carried over in any approvals by the board. This is the first one I've ever seen at the Board of Standards and Appeals over, over the thousand that it probably represented in the last 20 years. And I spoke with other members of your staff who opined on the same issue, that they have not seen a restriction on alcohol sales. The property is in a commercial zoning district, and it's in a C2 zoning district. And they were commercial, there would have been, there was no restriction on alcohol sales there on the facility that was there predating all of this. So I guess my, and I understand if you don't, I would understand if you don't agree with me, but I respectfully would ask that you could see that side of it, that there was confusion 20 years ago over what was going to happen with convenience stores. I think that led to the restriction on the hours of operation. And I also think it led to the restriction on beer sales. And from your own knowledge of driving around the greater New York City area, as well as I'm sure the United States of America, I'm sure all of you could attest to the fact that you've pulled into a convenience store at all hours of the days and night, and the convenience store has been open. And that they've sold gas and beer in that convenience store. I've in fact never been to a convenience store that's been otherwise. So that's 20 years later, and I understand, you know, you're, you're looking at the community board. Maybe, we can't get the community board's attention. Maybe Mr. Costanzo, your executive director, could reach out to them and speak to them on our behalf to maybe call out that maybe they cut and paste something.
I, I asked them, I inquired, and the district manager told me it's already been heard. And if the BSA wants to do something or change it, it's up to the BSA, but they already heard it. But maybe if I showed them this hearing video, they would consider rehearing it. But they're like, well, it's already been heard. If the BSA wants to make a change, okay.
And I just want to be clear, when, when it was before the community board, what was the understanding that the, of the application?
I spoke about returning to the 1997 approval. And I told them that none of the work had been done from the previous approval. This was a new 73211, and we wanted to restore the site back to as it was. And that's, I spoke for three minutes, because it's one of those ones where they do the land use first, and then they have the full board and it goes, and that was it.
And you didn't have any drawings to show them?
I handed out drawings.
Oh, okay. But you didn't, you explained that it's not the same size as the other site?
I said that we're returning to the same, they never did the work of the last site. The site before it was the same exact site as it is today. That, that Greg Grant was never in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I didn't get into anything else. They, I, what I do is I go up, I put the plans down. Whoever wants to take them, take them. And then I have three minutes.
So you don't have boards that you're showing?
It's a huge, hundred person.
Sometimes, sometimes we do. Sometimes we have electronics, sometimes we have handouts. But they always have everything in front of them. We think what happened here is, is a nuance to this. And there's a nuance that experts in this field can understand. There's an old BSA application from the 50s, there's a new one from 2002, this is a new special permit app. I mean, right off the bat, right there, I would confuse the layperson just in the last sentence that I just said. So I don't think that there's a real conceptualization and understanding of all these different actions. And I definitely, from what Elise has reported to me, don't think that it was clearly, that they were clearly understanding that the old 2,400, that there was a 2,400 square foot approval before, and, and we've, that is not what's at issue right now.
They never saw it.
They, they didn't see that, and that wasn't, anybody that was on the board right now really had no knowledge of this old approval. They just had, just the resolution, they could read it, but they didn't really have. So we think it's a little bit of a misunderstanding. But nonetheless, even if it's not a misunderstanding, I don't believe that, from my experience in practicing and doing this for the last 20 years, I don't believe that a community board or, or the zoning board for that matter, really should be restricting what products are sold within the property, so long as they're lawful and they're allowed to be sold under state and local law.
And Mr. Pilat, the sales area is, is what?
The sales area is, the, the whole building is 400 square feet, and that includes the attendance area. And, and so the, the sales area itself has to be much smaller, because it's got a beer cooler, probably 200 and something square feet. It's a very small kiosk. It's not exactly, you know, where you're going for big shopping. It's, it's literally an old convenience store kiosk.
268 square foot sales area.
268.
With a four-door cooler and a coffee counter.
Yeah.
And the attendant area. So whatever you can fit in a four-door cooler.
I mean, basically, beer, cigarettes, and coffee are how they make their money.
Mm-hmm.
Other products in the cooler as well.
Mm-hmm.
You're not going in there for a turkey for Thanksgiving.
Maybe a little one.
Maybe a little, very, very small one.
A leg of a turkey.
You could get the beer batter for the turkey, hopefully, hopefully.
Beer batter.
The beer for the beer batter.
Um, okay. Want to keep talking about other stuff?
Well, there was already question of the hours. The car wash, the owner asked us if, if we could relocate the car wash to the other side that's adjacent to an auto shop where they sell cars on the Utica Avenue side. Again, this is, the dealer, the operator there is, you know, has, makes money from these uses there. And the gas sales, as you've always known, the gas sales don't make a ton of money. So these small gas stations, they thrive on some type of ancillary use. We're constantly telling you that, the operators are telling you that. Here, we don't have a big convenience store. The, the car wash, believe it or not, people come in and they, they do wash the car, they put a couple bucks in it and they vacuum. And we're up against a used car lot next to us on the Utica Avenue side. I know it sounds like small little nickels, but all these.
This is a self-serve?
It's a self-serve. All these little nickels add up.
So this is something that's more of the tradition of the board and how it's added to, towards these handheld car wash things. Obviously, next to, next door to a residence is not appropriate. But I don't know what people think about it next to the automotive. It's an auto dealership that's next door on the other side.
Right now, there's a vacuum pump there, the vacuum cleaning.
We would like to put them all, the idea that when I spoke to the owner is to put the vacuum, the air in the thing, all in that one spot.
My question is, do you, it will only then serve one car?
Yes.
Anything's better.
I know, I, I just, and so the machine can only serve one car, right?
The washing machine, yes.
Washing machine?
Yeah, it's, it's got a hose on it to a pole.
Right.
It's, yeah, no, I just don't, because I've seen some that are two-faced, so I was just trying to see.
No, it's one of these, you grab a wand, you grab that wand, that always, me, I can never keep under control with one hand, it'll always fly backwards with it.
That's why I never went to have DMV.
See, I have to use two hands. Have to use two hands.
Um.
And not do it when it's freezing cold out.
And so your proposal is to put that next to the dumpster?
Next to the dumpster, next to the used car sales. And we could put everything in that one spot also, all the owners.
You would need drainage there then.
You would need drainage.
She would put drainage in. The owner is a female, so I reference to her.
Otherwise, we can return it back to that old spot.
Where would you put it?
But you guys wanted it. Okay.
So.
Where would you put the bin that's currently there?
Now, the, the bin stays.
The bin would stay, the bin would stay. We don't need such a big dumpster either. The dumpster could be, could be.
So then, how does the car do this? It pulls in head fir-, where does it pull its?
It pulls in head first.
Head first, there's not enough space between, on the drawing anyway, between the, I guess that's, I'm not sure if that's the washing machine. There's a light fixture, there's a, there's a air, and then there's the washing.
Sure, yeah. There's, we, we went through it yesterday with, with the project engineer. There is space next to the dumpster that you could fit one car right in there. And they could relocate the vacuum a little bit, too.
So the vacuum station is there, there's a light fixture, there is a dumpster, there's existing tank vents, not sure what.
Right, they can move the vacuum, he said, when he spoke to the engineer.
So they can move the vacuum towards the roadway.
They can move the vacuum towards the light fixture, yeah.
And then install the washing machine contraption.
In the front left corner, yeah.
But then, when you're driving in head first, you're blocking the curb cut.
When he did the dimensions yesterday, it's, it's nine foot two down at the widest part of the splay. He feels he could fit the car at the top, up where the, right next to the dumpster.
And you could have.
I could, I could give it to you in plan. I'd like to give it to you in plan.
It looks really squished. Like, if you're having trouble holding that nozzle, you're going to be holding it with your elbows crushed against your waist.
You might, and you might, you're right. And like I said, the dumpster doesn't need to be that big either, though. So it's, it's a very large dumpster for a site that doesn't produce much trash. So we could work on that.
You can't move the dumpster, you can't move any of them.
No, but we could make it smaller. We can, we could make it smaller and make more room there.
Okay.
So let us play.
You can look at the circulation.
We'll play. I thank you for considering the record, considering the idea. We'll, we'll toy with it.
Okay.
I think, I, I think it would be helpful maybe just to, to explain the, the coin-operated type of wash. I know you had a case some years ago that, that was a little bit more of an elaborate.
Yeah, that was actually structure, I think, is what you're thinking about on Victory Boulevard.
Yeah, I, I'm just aware of what these are, but I think maybe.
We'll give them maybe a pictorial to it and give some information on the, on the machinery, so that way the board is.
You're not dealing with vacuum, you're not dealing with blowers. Yeah, including the drainage on, on, because of the small space.
We will.
And if there's a requirement that the EP requires for these types of drainage, just.
We'll address that.
Find out about.
So you're going to give us more information on.
We'll give you more information. We thank you for considering the request.
But he already owns them.
Yes.
Already owns them. So it's not like he's going to go out and buy new ones, he just took them off, right?
Correct.
So whatever it is, it is. And so if we have that one on that side, and I'm having trouble understanding how you don't mess up your egress in your traffic. So you're going to need to show a maneuverability diagram that not just shows, like on your current maneuverability diagram, you don't have the actual width of the cars, it's just the line. You need to show.
I, I need to, to show you that anything that's happening is not messing up that exit. I'll clearly show you.
Yeah.
If it doesn't work, then we won't be asking for it, but we'll show you something that works.
Because, and I don't actually know what size cars these are on the maneuverability diagram. Are they all like, are they SUV? It should be figured based on SUVs, right?
Yeah, I don't know what size. They don't label the cars, but.
They look like little Mini coupes.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what size, I don't know what kind of car they are. But clearly, that, there's no circulation problem there. But there is on, it might be where the dumpster is, so I'll find out.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, and then other questions we had?
You had about the, the clothes bins being removed. You also asked if the diesel price sign needs to be counted towards signage, which was a comment. It is already counted?
Not the diesel price sign, the sign on the wall that says diesel here.
Uh-huh.
In the photograph that you had submitted.
It's like a banner.
I've got it. I doubt, if it's on a banner, we didn't count it. I'm almost positive. The, the engineer never counts banners, so this banner should be taken down.
Yeah. Or count it and then see if you can fit.
Or count it. We'll, we'll, we'll take that issue. I have a feeling it.
I don't know why he doesn't count banners. Batter is a sign. Look up the definition of a sign.
Because the operator's usually going and put the banners up after we're done or while, while, while we're here.
Okay. Um, okay, and then we needed more on the landscaping.
Yeah, Elise just passed you our plans. We gave you landscaping around the ID sign in the corner, and we gave you landscaping in the top.
Where, which, where?
If you have Elise's plan, I'll call it Elise's plan. It's showing on the circulation plan, you were just pointing to, but it's showing on all the plans. So if you go to site plan in lower right corner, you'll see three little, three bushes.
Oh, you just go over there.
If you go to top right corner, you'll see bushes. You go to top left corner, you'll see bushes.
There's still anything to park in, right?
Yeah, there's still parking there.
Yep.
Is that, if I heard you correctly.
Okay. Is that okay? Land, it's all pretty minimal now landscaping. So the, so I'm wondering, as long as we're talking, let's say, for lack of a better word, making, kind of trying to make agreements, right? Compromises, agreements, and all that stuff. You have however many of those are planters, right? As opposed to in-ground on the upper left.
The upper, that's in response to a severe infiltration of rodents that they're experiencing over there on that side of the property. And there's a residence behind, so we, we can put plantings in there, but we are experiencing a tremendous rodent population.
But couldn't that be because of the clothes bins, as was suggested by Commissioner Ali Brown?
We don't know, I don't know the cause of it, but that was, we could certainly put the landscaping in the ground. They were happy to.
Okay.
But.
So there are rodent controls for landscaping. I'm not sure why these places.
We have an exterminator on site that's putting, that's traps and baits the property retain.
Not just.
He wasn't, I'm sorry.
This type of plant.
Yeah, it, there's, there's ways, the type of plants that are not tasty. There's also ways of.
I didn't, that I didn't know.
There's also ways of handling the planting beds where they, they use, for one, the ones that I've really seen is they use rock, sort of rock garden-y type approaches, that kind of thing. That's another way. There are ways to.
We, that's not a problem. We'll, we'll do that. It's not a problem. That was the reasoning for it.
The exterminator.
The exterminator didn't give you any, uh, didn't give any indication of what he thought might be the reason that there are more rodents out?
I haven't been in contact directly with him, with him myself or her, but I'll, Lisa will inquire with him.
So, that's the southwest corner then?
Right. So, we'll put landscaping in the ground on that one.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any opinions about the beer prohibition? I thought it was odd myself when I read about it, but I don't think it's necessary.
If we could reach out to the, if we could reach out to the community board, that, that would be great.
We can do that, but it's true, it's in a commercial district. You could tear down this whole thing, cause it's a gas station, right? And put up a 7-Eleven and what?
Liquor store.
A liquor store.
It, so, uh, the reason why I'd reach out to the community board is only because if they're experiencing something in particular that's going on at this establishment where people are buying and, and drinking outside of the establishment, that's why they're saying no, that's one thing.
Mm-hmm.
Outside of an extreme like that, I don't see any issue with having it, that the beer be sold at the establishment.
Thanks for the reasonable comment.
So, if we could just make a outreach, please, to the community board and just get them to clarify, and while they're at it, just to clarify whether that was a cut and paste, and whether they realized that the project is actually half the size of what was approved way back then?
Twenty-five percent.
Oh, twenty-five percent?
Twenty-five percent.
Basically, you're not adding anything to the existing-
No, we were taking, we were adding to the lot, it was becoming a 16,000 square foot lot, they were-
But currently, the application-
Yeah, no, we're not changing.
It's what's existing, you're not adding anything to the structure.
Nothing is being structured.
Is the landscaping just added?
Right. So, that was a 2002 approval, right? So, if you could just let them know that what they reviewed is a much smaller project than this one, maybe send them a set of drawings. Um, they should have it, but it, you know, for, for your information, you need to make clear, very clear, when you present to a community board, when something like this happens, so that they don't just kind of think that they're kind of rubber stamping an extension.
We will, we will.
Spoken on after. They were just like, so?
Yeah, right. No, but to speak to them before, I'm sorry. Okay.
Hours of operation?
Yeah, hours of operation. They were limited, we had, yeah, so that's another thing, they wanted it not to be 24/7, um, as to the community, to the convenience store, which must be the same issue. Whatever they were concerned about in 2002, must have been like the, the 7-Eleven kind of phenomenon that's hanging out.
That's what was going on at the time.
Yeah.
And for your own knowledge, the site has been operating contrary to these conditions since 1997.
So, what is the current-
So, for 22 years, we've been, they've been selling beer, washing cars, and opens 24 hours.
Okay.
The last 22 years.
Nothing like having conditions on an approval.
That's, the approval was expired. They were operating without an approval.
So, it's okay then?
Yeah, they were operating without an approval. They didn't even have an approv-, no, it's not okay, but they were operating, they didn't have an approval, but, uh, but I'm giving you some, at least some confidence to know that unless there's been a million complaints on the property, the very conditions we're talking about have been in place.
Mr. Paul, the, the 90s approval was pursuant to 73 to 11?
Uh, no, I think the 90s was, uh, pre-61.
So, it was a 1954 variance-
Yeah.
Until 91, when it was discontinued, 95, it changed the use, which wasn't convenient, 97 was the convenience store, and 2002, a 73 to 11 special permit.
So, the whole thing got built again the way it is now, 90, pursuant to the 97 approval?
Yeah.
And it was, it was a 73 to 11, it was also a special permit in 97.
Right.
So, 97-
So, statutorily, you, there, there wasn't a term statutorily, it was just at the discretion, so.
No, in 97, there was a term, there was a 10-year, 20-year term.
At the discretion of the-
So, technically, we're not, actually technically, we're not really that late, if we got your approval, we'd actually be-
And, and the 97 one, um, it was a service station with accessory convenience store, and-
It was exactly what you have now, the 97, mimicked it identical.
It was the set, 2002 where it tripled, or wherever it is that it did.
And with car washing then?
I don't believe there was a car wash on a 92 approval.
It says, and on 2002, it specifically says, no repair, no car washing.
Okay.
And, and that's the one that says vacuum use only 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, that's the other thing, right?
We're happy to restrict the hours of the car wash, that's, that's nobody's, uh-
But we can see that conditions don't mean much to this property owner, so-
I, yeah, I can't say much, it's been the-
Which is why we should try to avoid conditions and try to make the architecture enforce the condition. Okay. Um, and then we have this interesting sort of skirting the issue letter from the engineer. I get it, the engineer doesn't want to commit to any statement about the wall, but I think the owners are here, right?
No.
No, the owners are not here?
I believe the letter is good.
No.
It is?
He says the entire, he says the entire-
Says the entire fence.
Yes.
But he then says what it consists of. Okay.
I quoted his language.
No, he's not skirting it.
I think he's saying it's a darn good fence.
Yeah, I think with the letter.
I think he's, the takeaway is it's a darn good fence.
It's a darn good fence.
Copy the language from the TSA.
All right.
Yeah, he's talking about fences slash walls consisting of three feet of high PVC.
Yeah.
Fence on top of four feet high brick wall located above-
That's a difference between an engineer reading the letter and a lawyer reading the letter. I'm looking at this as, that's a safe letter, you could sign and seal that.
Thomas, right?
Okay.
How much time do we have?
Okay, I think that was it. Um, so, the hours of operation, just to clarify-
The landscaping.
You're proposing 24/7 for the convenience store, everybody all right with that? Yes, I just want to clarify. And, okay. Okay. All right, um, so, what are we talking about in terms of submitting us revised-
We'd like to do the landscaping first, submit to you, I'd imagine, right? Do you want the landscaping on plan, or do you want the landscaping work done?
You're just going to do the same, you're going to do, um-
So, put it on plan, so we could submit to you in two weeks.
Okay. But, so you're going to do the landscaping on the plan? Explain to us how in the world the washing things could really work?
Explain the washing, discuss the hours, uh-
The traffic flow diagram.
The traffic flow and the beer 20, the beer.
Mm-hmm, okay.
The dies, and the diesel banner.
And I'm just curious, cause it was a comment from the community board granted it was a much larger store. Um, there, in terms of part, parking space, there's a lot of room on the site for a car to just kind of pull up and run into the convenience store, even though it's not a designated parking space. Has there been any issues about not having, you know?
No, not that the owner is, the owner hasn't told us of anything. It's, it's, as you can tell, obviously, it's a very small convenience store, as we've been talking about, it doesn't get that many people that are traveling. To, this is a true convenience store, this is, you're, you're there, you're getting something, you are not coming here, unless you want beer, cigarettes, or, or gas.
All right then, okay. So, how quickly could you do this?
Uh, we could submit in two weeks, that'll give the architect, the engineer some time to, to look at the design that, uh, we're discussing.
Two weeks, you could submit in-
Did we ask about speakers?
Sorry, what?
Speakers.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Are there any speakers on this? Okay. So, what would be really great is if you could work just a tiny bit faster-
Yes.
Cause we have an April 17 submission, which is 10 days.
Yes, we can do that.
For a May 7 hearing, and if you're really responsive and good, we might be able to close.
Thank you, thanks for considering it.
Okay.
All right, thank you for listening to our, our discussion, thank you.
Sure, okay. So, I just want to make a note again, Darrell, or, slash Tony Darrell, if you could reach out to the community board and get clarification on their concerns about beer and hours of operation. Um, is everyone okay? Do you want, can keep going, Billy?
Mm-hmm.
At 2 o'clock, we'll take a break, okay?
I remember, what was it, 1?
Mm-hmm.
I remember 24, 2018, 118, BZ77.
We should have four more cases. Oh. Then two, two, and a second call. We have, we have two second calls.
I don't know, let's see. I don't want us to go too without at least standing up.
We are open, we're in the office, we are open. We did have somebody attend your executive session yesterday, heard your comments. The only comment seemed to be one regarding the bubbles on the proposed plans, and I'm not exactly sure what the question was on that.
Um, it's simply that I didn't know what the changes were.
Oh, well, why don't we walk through it? If you look at P1, does everybody have them in front of you?
No, just-
Okay, just let me know when you do.
Sorry. Sorry, we need to make sure it's quiet. Thank you, Elise. Okay, P1.
Okay, on P1, the FAR changed just slightly, there's a change of .01, but a change nonetheless. On the notes, they were-
The FAR went to 1.29, right?
It's 1.23.
1, 2, 3.
I apologize, it's hard to read on the screen, it's a 1.23, if you zoom in.
What zoning district is it? This is an R4, .75 FAR, as of right.
Correct, a change by .01, as I said, the note on the bottom was rephrased, and a note was added that the elevations are an NAVD 88 as requested.
The note on the bottom was rephrased about which note?
Removal of more than 50% of existing exterior walls, it was rephrased to be exactly as your board is requesting in the new guidelines.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Along with the note regarding NAVD 88.
Okay.
On the next page, again, the notes were from, that's page P2, the notes are from the new guidelines that were issued.
Mm-hmm.
Page P3, once again, the same note. Uh, the floor area was modified just slightly, so the floor area calculations on the bottom of the page are circled on P3. The existing floor beams to remain, that's now been shown and added, so he's highlighted the entire first floor to show you that he's doing that, in addition to the legend below showing that. P4 is identical to P3, in the changes, I should say.
Mm-hmm.
Same on P5. The difference on P5 is in the rear, there's also a change to the roof. You recall, it was changed to a hip in this recent submission, so you see the back of the roof where it's becoming a hip. On P6, we've now added the neighbor's house to it.
Mm-hmm.
P7, again, the neighbor's house is added, the roof has become a hip. P8, the roof has become a hit, a hip, and he's shown a line of where the existing versus the proposed is. P9 is the same change as P8. P10, the adjacent home is added. P11, the rear roof became a hip. P13, the rear roof became a hip. Same thing on P14, and there was a minor change in the front end as well. And, I believe those were all the changes with the exception of page C and D. C, if you recall, that rear wall, although, because it was becoming interior, you didn't want us to include it in the calculations, so that was modified, so now we have 85% of the existing exterior walls remaining on the exterior, and we don't include that wall, that was revision on C. And on D, remember I said there was a floor area change, a very minor one, that's been reflected on the zoning analysis form on D. So, that's a quick run-through of all the bubbles and why they're there.
Okay. Huh, I think this thing will, this thing will do it maybe. Just checking one thing, so I'm just looking at the, the change on the existing walls.
Please do.
I'm just trying to understand what happened to our side yard. Did our side yard reduce?
What do you mean, what happened to our side yard?
So, I, I'm just, because-
On P C?
The total, the calculation for the, um, walls to remain should be per floor, not total, so-
There's a first floor, a second floor, and a total, all three are on there.
But it doesn't show the percentage, it just has totals, it doesn't show percentage. I just wanted to make sure that our side yard is the existing side yard, which it is.
It is. I would venture to say that it's 85% per floor, because if you look on the first floor and the second floor, the only wall that's being taken down is that rear wall, and they're almost identical in their footprint.
Okay.
The only difference is that front right portion, well, on the, I should say, when you're looking at the plan, is the bottom right portion, minor difference.
Um, all right, all right then, are there any speakers on this one? Okay, so then I'd like to make, thank you for this, I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair of the floor.
Aye.
Vice Chair of the condo.
Aye.
Ms. Ashley Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Sheta.
Aye.
Ms. Shabat.
Aye.
And a motion to grant.
Chair of the floor.
Aye.
Vice Chair of the condo.
Aye.
Ms. Ashley Brown.
Aye.
This is full of conditions.
Thank you very much.
It's, is it a-
The, it's not necessary with the condition here, because there's almost, uh, almost the entire building is retained. The condition is when you're tearing, basically tearing the building down.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And the affirmative, so the truth of the law chooses another, but choosing a testimony before the board can respond on the board's own advice.
Thank you.
Did you get one? Did you get one?
I don't think you called the case.
She didn't.
Here, there's, there's one extra.
Item number 25, 2018, 155, BZ11, 23, 27, Street Building.
Good afternoon, Jay Goldstein for the applicant, I think everyone has a copy.
Item number 252018155BZ112327, Street Book.
Good afternoon, Jay Goldstein for the applicant. I think everyone has a copy. I've handed up a set of plans that were submitted this morning in response to yesterday's comments at the review session. At the review session yesterday, I believe there were three main comments or main talking points. One was that the attic, the level of the, or the height of the house had a little bit of a increase at the center, and my dimensions only showed to 33. We actually removed that. It is supposed to be a flat roof that caps out at 33. There's a little lip at the perimeter, just a decorative lip, that is six inches, but the level of the roof and the level of the total height to the center of the peak is 33 feet, as shown on the plans. Also just...
So in other words, it's a parapet that's penetrating the sky exposure plane?
I don't think it penetrates it. Roof is a new roof, so it wouldn't...
Well, but there's a maximum building, building height of 30, oh...
Five, we're at 33.
Excuse me, Mr. Goldstein, these plans are lots which are only because they're not signed and sealed by the architect.
Good point. She got you.
I, apologies, because we have the certification, signed and sealed certification and notarized, I thought this was.
No, no, no.
I will second call, if I may, I'll second call and have signed and sealed.
Well, let's see, okay.
Someone's attention.
No, no, I appreciate it, and I apologize for the, that's...
A certification has nothing to do with floor plans, right?
100%, no, we have a certification from the architect, so I assume these were signed and sealed as well.
Oh, oh, you thought you...
I apologize that they're not.
Okay.
Never actually made that mistake before.
So, so the point is, though, the maximum building height that's permitted is 35, right? But you're at 33 plus...
Plus six inches.
Plus six inches for the little, for lack of a better word, it's like a parapet.
So we're fine in terms of that. So, and then with regard to the actual attic, I added a sheet, sheet 86, on the plans that are in front of you, which give you the calculations, it shadows, it hatches the portions of eight feet ceiling height, and it dots, or I don't know what the name is, for that portion that's seven feet tall. Actually, when doing the calculations yesterday, I caught the error. The actual new square footage at the eight-foot mark within the attic is 743 feet, .86, which brings our total FAR down to .95. I've adjusted the statement of facts also and submitted the statement of facts in response to that, so...
Okay, so slow down. So A6 is the floor area calculation page?
For the attic plan.
For the attic, which is measuring, so the hatching is indicating where it's greater than eight feet?
Right. A, B, C, D, E, F, if you look at the little column on the left-hand side, A, B, C, D, E, F is everything above eight feet, eight feet or above. And everything else, all the little hook and dot marks, is everything that's seven to eight feet.
So you've got 743 square feet?
Right, which is reduced...
That is floor area.
Right, which is reduced from the 933 that was shown, and we've amended the statement effects to match it.
That's weird. Why would it go down?
So I asked that question also, they told me they were correct, and I imagine that the reason being, they may have included portions that were under eight feet in their original calculation, but I corrected it on this side.
Okay, and sorry, what does it bring the FAR to?
.95. And the last question was with regard to the dormers, and a comment made to set back the dormers four feet because that's what the surrounding houses show. I'm a little confused to the comment. I believe that was, that was your comment with regard to the, to the attic.
No, my comment wasn't about dormers, Mike. So, you submitted photographs saying we should be allowed to have this three-foot, three-story structure in the rear, because here's pictures of other buildings that are backing up to us, look, they're three stories. But in fact, all of them set back at, from their, their top floors and often their second floors, set back with a, with a, an overhang, and guesstimating on the depth of the overhang, looking, they were, looked like they're, they're about four feet. So they're setting back about four feet from the rear perimeter wall.
They're not, the pictures, and I took the pictures myself, the, the eve that they're sitting on, so it's just a roof overhang that's about a foot, maybe a foot and a half, but the actual dormer on the houses at the side yards, let's say the two houses directly to our side, the dormers actually go, match up with the street, with the wall, perimeter wall of the building, but they're set back from the eve. The rear of, of the home on Lot 33, you can see it very clearly that it's flush with the rear yard of that house. The rest of the structure, it's just dormers projecting, the rest of it, yes, it is set back similar to the design that we have, but the actual dormer itself is flush with the exterior walls, it just has that little eve that, I guess for rainwater runoff, allows it to drain properly. But it's not set back. The only one that's set back is Lot 37. The, the dormer is flush with the exterior wall, but the exterior wall at the second floor and at the third floor are set back from the first floor. It's very, it's illustrated in those three pictures I sent.
No, I was looking at the three pictures you sent. That's actually where I got that from.
So if I can...
And you're not showing, see, your axo doesn't give us the rear, it only gives the front, so...
The axo gives the front and the side. The side that it shows you is the one that is adjacent to Lot 33, which has two, three dormers on the side, one of them is set back, but the other two, which are the very large dormers, are flush with the perimeter wall of that house. And you can see it...
No, I can't. So that's a thing? Where are you looking?
It's okay, if I approach, I'll show you what I'm looking at. See in this picture?
Okay, let me get to the picture so that everyone, so everyone, that's the March 22nd submission? Those are the homes at the rear, not the homes at the side.
The homes at the side, this is Lot 33, that's why we do the key chart, Lot 33.
Oh, but it's the, it's photographs of their rears?
Well, we were asked for photographs of the rear yard to show what, how, how tall the margin was. The photographs from the front and the side were submitted with our initial submission.
Right.
Sorry to make this from over there, but...
Yeah, yeah. No, we have the pictures on our screen, so...
So I'll, I'll repeat what I said, just so it can get on, on the video or everyone can hear. The pictures that were submitted in our last submission were a response to the board's request for pictures of the rear yards to show how many floors up the rear yard condition was. So they show that it's a third-story addition for the, for all of them with those dormers, which I was present, I took the pictures, the dormers are flush with the exterior wall, there's just the eve of the roof, as it slows down, projects about a foot or a foot and a half beyond the front wall of the building. So the pictures, you can see, picture one on that, on that submission, Lot 33, which when you're facing our side is the house on the right of us, has two very large dormers on the side of its house, which is flush with its third floor, and one at the rear of its home, which is flush with its third floor.
Flush with its second floor.
Flush with, sorry, the third floor is flush with the rest of the building. It goes...
No, it's more like this. Those are dormers, and the face of, of two of the dormers...
On the side.
On the rear, because I'm looking at the rear.
You're looking at, there's one dormer at the rear, three at the side of that home.
Oh, that's the sidewall?
Yeah.
So there are two of the dormers on the sidewall are flush with our exterior wall for the lower floors.
I understand, I thought you took a picture of the rear yard.
That is showing you the rear yard. It's showing you the rear yard and a portion of the side yard. You can look at, if you look at the key map on the bottom right corner, you could see how photograph one was taken, the angle that we took that picture. And that was a BSA approval. Actually, all three of the surrounding homes were BSA approvals.
Okay.
You can clearly see the difference of what's set back and what's not. If you look at picture one, there is this tiny little dormer in comparison to the other two, that's set back four, five feet. The other two are very, are, are flush with the perimeter wall.
No way to really tell from a photograph, but, um, okay, so...
And you can see it...
So what I can't tell from this axo, on A17, is whether the front and the rear are the same.
In terms of what?
In terms of the slope plus the dormer.
I believe they're the same in the, in dimension. The slope, I mean, you can see A7, it appears to be the same in terms of slope, in terms of set back from the perimeter of the building. And additionally, the dormer at the front of the house is not flush with the first floor, it's set back, well behind the first floor. So the first floor projects, and then the rest of the house comes along at, at the second floor. So it's 21 feet from the street.
Okay. It's not beautiful, but...
But if you are, I mean, if you have any questions on it, I'm happy to, to answer them, but I believe that's, from, from the ground, being the person on, on the ground and seeing what was there, that, that's what was there. It's typical with the board grants from that era, that you'd have them flush at 20 feet, they didn't typically have them set back.
But the big eve is what we don't have in this situation, right? It breaks up the massing.
You do.
We don't. Do we have a big eve?
You're having, you have eves all over the place, yeah. Every, every dormer has an eve.
No, they're not dormers, it's a floor. So this is a floor, this isn't a dormer.
Every floor has, every window on the floor has an eve.
I mean, it's a full third floor now, it's got eight-feet split ceilings all the way up.
And it's still going to be smaller significantly than the house next door does. The house on Lot 33 is, is tremendous.
That's part of the problem.
But we came in with a very, very, for what the board sees, a very conservative, you know, request. We're asking for 24 feet at the rear yard at all levels, we're not asking for, to intrude into the second floor, we're not asking anything, you know, beyond what's...
Well, it's a three-story building, it's not conservative.
But it, but that, the height of the house is in line with every other house on the block that we showed, so...
Like I said, it's, it's not a small house, almost...
It's not a small house, but it's a, comparatively speaking, the request, I believe, and as I believe the board noted at the first hearing, is, is minor in nature.
What? It's, I, it's an enormous house, and this one, the one next door is enormous, and so will this one be?
No, no, I just was looking at the satellite, a Google satellite, just to get a sense of what's the treatment of the rear wall on Lot 33. And it does seem like it extends out all the way to the third floor straight up, without any set back, except for that eve that's jutting out beyond the 20 feet.
It's so small that I couldn't, I tried to actually measure it with Google Earth, and I couldn't.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I don't know, there's an eve, so you can't tell where it's, unless you're sitting there measuring, you really can't know. Are there any speakers on this?
I will ask though, given my, given my, my error on the signed and sealed, can we second, if the board's inclined to approve it, then can we second call it and I'll get this to sign and seal?
Just, just one more thing now also too. It should say proposed alteration, and on your demo plan, could you just, the existing joists, run those numbers again? I get 171.4 unless I'm adding wrong.
Of what?
It says 171, existing joist square footage, 171.2, I get 171.4? Maybe I'm adding wrong?
It's, we're planning 100% retention, joist retention. So the question usually comes up to, to exterior wall retention.
I don't make a difference to whatever, but, you know.
I mean, the, the plan's though, so if it's, you know...
I don't know, what page are you on?
Does the demo plan A16?
You're talking about the retained joists as opposed to...
Right, the addables, we calculate together, and I get 171. So when you come up, it comes up to, I get 171.4.
I don't know how you can do it at all, because it's existing... What?
Yeah, maybe I'm just doing one, you're right.
No, I mean, when they talk about, the title is actually wrong, I think.
Well, I said proposed alteration is wrong.
Because it's existing perimeter walls versus existing joists. I don't even understand how they're calculating this. They're using perimeter wall calculation to determine the linear feet of the perimeter wall, and they're calling that joists. That's not what joists are. So, and then, so actually, this whole calculation chart is meaningless, right? Wrong is one way of describing it, meaningless is another. Joists you would measure perpendicular to the, to the outside, parallel long walls?
So in any event, with this case, much like the last case that you just heard...
Right.
I think it's pretty clear that the, the joists in this situation are going to be retained, we're not proposing to lift the house.
Yes.
The extension is primarily at the rear and at the...
Right. But this particular architect gets confused very much and submits confusing calculations frequently, so he sort of has to get his act together.
It's not just the calculations, the project name is not there, the case number is not there.
Right, the calendar number is...
Calendar number's not there.
So your note, the, the retention note is only on the demo plan and not on the main plan? Oh, actually, it is, I'm sorry. No, it's actually only on the demo plan, it's not on the main plan, about the 50% are standard.
I'll put the notes on all plans, this was done this morning, so I apologize. I'll put the BSA calendar number, we'll put the notes on all plans.
Change the date?
Check those calculations and...
The date's changed, I got the date right.
Got the date, okay.
And say proposed alteration, not ulterior.
The rush the guy.
Right.
Well, you have clients you got to contend with as well.
No, it's not about the clients. This is about the, it's cheaper if the architect does it right the first time and checks it four times, instead of doing it wrong four times, right?
I'm merely a man. I can only do so much.
No, actually, no, you're in, but you can also check with him and hold him to quality.
I did, that's how we caught the attic thing. I, I apologize, I'll make the corrections now and we'll, we'll second call, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Second call is, all right, I would like to take a 10-minute break, if you guys don't want to actually take a lunch break, we have three cases, but it's 2 o'clock.
Do you want to do the second?
Oh, we could do the second calls, yeah.
Are you okay?
Yeah, because it's 1:58.
I know. All right, so, um...
You're so smart.
You're in. Second call, item number 17, I'm sorry, no, no, 17, I'm lost now, wait a second, wait a second, wait a second.
Leave it to you, please.
You're the SOC, right? Item number five, 27912BZ2724, College Point Boulevard, Queens.
Amanda Iannotti, on behalf of the applicant, I called the applicant and got some more information about the site remediation that was done, and I did formally submit the tank closure report and the, and the spill case closure letter. Along with that is a timeline.
Oh.
Which details all of the remediation efforts. I'll pull out some important parts. In September of 2005, the rap and the construction plan were submitted to DEC, and it proposed a SVEAS system, which is a soil vapor extraction and air sparging system. That was approved and activated in August of 2006. September of 2008, it was deactivated and then monitored with quarterly sampling. In January 2011, it was reactivated to extract some more contamination. In May 2011, a revised rap was submitted to DEC, and also the system was put on hold to remove the underground storage tanks. In September of 2011, there was soil excavation done. In December of 2012, there was a post-remedial action monitoring work plan submitted to DEC and approved, and soil samples were again done. In January of 2013, the post-remedial sampling report was submitted to DEC, and then in July of 2013, the closure letter was issued.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Sure.
Good, all right, and so all submitted, I'll have to take your word for it, because I can't get onto the website. Does everybody else, does any, is anybody able to see it?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, good. All right then, then I would like to make a motion to close.
Chair Pro Mutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant.
Chair Pro Mutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Where's Elise? Yeah, for Richmond Road, are they, are they ready for their plans? She would have come in if they were ready, I think. If not, then we're going to have to take the break. Come on, come on.
Yeah, nothing has been submitted.
It's not submitted yet, I need another team.
Okay, all right.
At the end of the call.
Okay, fine, so now we're going to take a break for how long?
10, 15?
Are we starting new cases? Yeah, 10-minute break. 10-minute break? That's all, everybody, nobody wants a full lunch break, is that right? Okay, back at 2:10, 2:11.
Okay, we're back on the record, April 9th, 2019, zoning calendar, new cases, item number one, 2018103BZ, 936 Avenue, Art Brookland. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the board, in response to any board member questions?
Good afternoon, Lyra Altman, in the office of Lyra Altman. We did have somebody attend your executive session yesterday and heard your comments. First, on just a few of the little things with respect to the firm map, that actually was submitted to your board, so you should have that in your records. It was submitted with a response to notice of comments. So I double-checked my records, it was sent to you guys. With respect to 77211.
Sorry, we don't have it, so you need to resubmit it.
Okay, I'll be happy to resend it. I think it was, I think it was item 19.
No, we don't have, okay. It didn't make it, however, whatever that is.
Okay, I'm sorry that it didn't make it, we do have it in our folder, so I will make sure that it comes through to you. With respect to 77211, it actually doesn't apply. If you read 77211A, it says it's applicable, and I'm going to quote, "When a zoning lot is divided by a boundary between two residence districts limited to single or single and two-family residences, the R5 zoning district is not limited to single or two-family residences, so you can't use that section." We wanted to use that section, we tried to make it apply, we couldn't unfortunately. So that's why it is a little messy, the zoning on this site. It would have been cleaner, we fully agree with you, but we could not use that section.
Can you give me the section number again?
It was 77211, and it was specifically, it was A.
It's an interesting section, I do have to say, because it is more generally applied than the caveats indicate.
I have a copy if you'd like to see it.
Yeah, no, but there's two caveats, and I almost never see DOB holding firm on this. One is the two residence districts limited to single or single and two-family residences, that is divided by a boundary between those two. And the other one is two commercial districts or two manufacturing districts in which the[1780.35] And the other one is two commercial districts or two manufacturing districts in which the same uses are permitted, but different bulk regulations apply, and we see it applied all the time in different ways. So, that's, that's kind of DOB extending the application of that a lot. Okay.
Okay. We do have revised plans already signed and sealed. I have them in my folder with the decimal points added to the FAR. You're right, we are not requesting an FAR of 799.
Good.
That would be a bit extreme. And lastly, we looked at the powder room, and we had submitted to your board also with a response to notice of comments. I believe it was a 1921 Belcher, 1929 Belcher Hyde map. And that powder room didn't appear to be on it. So, what we did was we ran the calculations, we revised the plans accordingly, just assuming that powder room is illegal for the moment. And what we saw was that using this as the most conservative approach, the first floor contains 133 feet, 4 inches.
A linear feet, you mean?
Linear feet, yes. And we're keeping 57 feet, 9 and 1/2 inches of that. That's on the first floor. The second floor, linear footage is 138 feet, 5 and 1/2 inches.
So, 57 is then 114.
The calculation is 43.3 on the first floor, 100% on the second floor, for a total of approximately 72%.
No, but we don't total them.
I just wanted to let you know over the building. I'm giving you both.
So, it's 43.4% on the first floor.
43.3 on the first floor and 100% on the second floor.
So...
And this is, as you saw, a one-story enlargement, which is why the second floor is not being changed.
I'm just looking at, how might you get...
And I do have revised plans already reflecting these calculations, along with the decimal point that was missing.
In order to get to, sorry, what'd you say? Was the total one of your footage?
Total, total, assuming that that powder room is illegal, which we don't know that it is, but we're just taking the assumption as the most conservative approach, it brings us to 130, 133 feet, 4 inches.
So, you'd need another nine feet to get you to 50%. The question is...
Or because this is such a modest proposal, we're not touching the second floor.
No, I know, but once you change the rules, you change the rules, right?
But again, typically, you see us touching three floors. In this particular instance, we're only touching one floor, which perhaps that changes the circumstances.
Then, then it's too confusing. Then it's like, in this circumstance, this, and in that circumstance, that.
And I will point out, this was filed before that 45%.
Clearly does qualify as an enlargement here. That's, that's the difference in this applicant's favor. So, that, so if we were going to go with that, then we, then we need more clarity, kind of, like when the entire second floor is being retained, something like that?
Yeah.
Because that's what's happening here.
And there is no...
Entire second floor is being retained, so if...
Right, and no other vertical enlargement is being made even above the second floor.
Right. And the joists are at the same level.
Yeah.
So, maybe that's how we clarify, because otherwise, I'm fearful of the slippery slope, right? So, if we could just say that very clearly for the resolution, that 40, all right, let me just go back.
43.3.
43.4% of...
43.3.
3% of the first floor is being retained, but 100% of the second floor is being retained. The joists are being retained at their existing location. There is no addition to the second, there's no roof addition, so a third floor. And the enlargement is entirely at the first floor. And that's why, because the total combined is...
Total combined is 72%, which is well in excess of the 50% your board has been requesting.
Well, it's not that way. So, a total combined is 72% on each floor. I mean, on...
On total of the building.
Of all, both floors.
Correct.
For both floors, with 100% on the second floor. Okay, so just make sure, I want to be super clear so that nobody can tell me two weeks from now, oh, but you let them do it on that application. Right, okay. All right, so then, are there any speakers on this? All right, so was there something that you were changing on the joists?
You wanted the FEMA map as well, the firm map, which, as I said, I can look back why it didn't come to you, but I know I have it. I could forward it right over to you.
But this is clearly way outside of the, right?
Oh, yes.
This is, it's probably a firm that shows it as a non, non-firm, is my guess.
And I can forward it within the next three minutes if you want.
Oh, you can?
Absolutely. It's in my, it's in my phone. I can forward it right over to you.
Okay, let's do that. So, second call this and throw, and forward it to us.
I will forward you the plans where it's showing the decimal points in the correct location. I will forward you the same plans with the bathroom being ignored because we're not 100% sure of its legality, and I will send you the firm map. I don't have a cover letter for them right now, but I can get you one this evening.
That's okay. No, no, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number two, 2018152BZ, 2 East 15th Street, Manhattan. Sorry. Commissioner, hand you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the board to respond on city board member questions. Go.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Commissioners Frederick A. Becker for The Well. This is an application for a proposed PCE, not a legalization. The facility has not yet opened. We attended your executive review session yesterday. We made the correction in the statement of facts to the AMPM. Our apologies, it's bad handwriting on my part. And we also explained about the elevator, that it is a dual-purpose elevator for the re-adaptive use of the building. And here for any other questions.
And I note that the lobby of that elevator is right opposite the front door to the PCE, so it's not like they go into the lobby and then have to walk down, roll down a long corridor in order to get there.
No, there's direct access from the facility into that.
Okay. All right, any comments? Are there any speakers on this? Other speakers on this application?
Your phone? Oh, okay. No, she's a, she's a neighbor, so she didn't...
Oh, okay. And the neighbor didn't want to speak on this application, on the well? No? Oh, okay. All right then, so I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion, just to clarify for counsel, the hours of operation are 5:30 a.m. to 12 a.m. It's Monday through Sunday or Monday?
Seven days, yes.
Seven days, okay. So, and a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number three, 2017142BZ, 3,000 Coney Island Avenue, Brooklyn.
This is the one that we don't have jurisdiction, right?
Right.
So, there's nothing...
Is there anybody here for Coney Island Avenue? He there? You're here for...
So, sorry. Oh, so let me, let me explain. So, your members, your neighbors? Okay, so, so unfortunately, this, so I need to explain a little bit of background. In order for an applicant to come before us, they need to go to the Department of Buildings, and the Department of Buildings has to deny their application because it doesn't comply with the zoning. That's what gives us the jurisdiction to review the application. They went to the Department of Buildings, and the Department of Buildings denied their request to get that document. So, it means that we don't have jurisdiction to hear this case today. So, I'm really sorry that you came, but if you want to give testimony rather than coming here and watching a day of us doing this, you can submit your testimony in writing, and we'll acknowledge that, and you can tell us that you attended this one, so we get a sense of that. And submit your testimony in writing to, can you give the email address? We'll give it to you. So, just a second. So, we'll give it to you if you want to write it down.
I also want to get...
Or maybe you can write it down and just give it to them. So, it's submit@bsa.nyc.gov.
Okay. And you could submit your responses to...
Okay. Very apologies about that. Thank you very much for coming. We didn't realize it until this Friday. Thank you.
Okay. So, let's do second call for...
Wait, are we doing a date vote?
No.
And I have jurisdiction.
No, we have jurisdiction. We can't do anything.
I don't know how it stays open, like, I don't know how the procedure works, but if we don't have jurisdiction, does...
It's not...
We don't have jurisdiction.
It's just...
So, you're taking it off count? What are we doing here, saying postponed?
No, we don't have jurisdiction. I don't know what you want to call it. You can say it's not, not heard.
It's nonexistent right now.
So, then it's, then it's...
Denied.
It's not even denied. We have no action to...
We have no action before us.
We just kind of pull it from the application. I mean...
No, no, no. She has to just show, you can just write a special notation instead of it saying postponed. You say, "No jurisdiction to hear."
No jurisdiction. Okay, so it'll be...
That's all.
Off-counters somewhere. I just don't want it to get lost. Okay.
No, it's why.
Okay. Okay, so then, we're doing second call?
Yes.
Item number 18, 201838BZ, 1717 Richmond Road, Staten Island. Received the submission of revised plans. I forwarded to you.
Police bulletin from Eric Polanek PC.
Okay, and the revised plans show...
Should show the whole new trash with the curb.
Oh, so you submitted the plans that, I'm sorry, I, so you weren't making any changes? You were just officially submitting the plans that we looked at just before?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Everybody okay with those plans? Does everybody remember what we're talking about? It was, okay. Yes. Okay, so then I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And we're sure we have in submit, we've seen the plans submitted. Everyone?
It's in here.
Yeah, you've seen them. Okay. And then, I'd like to make a motion to grant on condition that the trash is stored on the interior in an air-conditioned space, and that the landscaping will be installed and maintained and replaced as necessary according to the approved plans. Okay, on that, a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Application's been granted.
And by the way, it's a five-year term. It's a maximum that we can do on the...
Yep, understood. Thank you very much.
Okay, now, Mr. Goldstein, are you ready? Maybe Lyra?
I didn't get it.
Should we go off-camera while we wait? Yeah.
Yeah, take a 10-minute.
Go off-camera.
No, no, just the top, the top, the top button.
You have Lyra's? Go ahead, go.
Okay, we're back on the record.
So, we're back on the record. So, this is new case.